I guess, do you just want to shred all the cheese and I'll run up there?
Size of his or her official duties. The point of a refusal is to remove a member's influence from the discussions. Taking part in the discussion exerts an influence. But influence can also be exerted by mere presence while discussions are taking place. That is why a refusal requires a council member from physically removing itself or herself from this meeting as well as those folk. In the past, I have witnessed several Trinidad council members, as well as our previous Trinidad mayor, recuse themselves due to conflicts of interest. They simply left the room when there was a discussion and a council vote. Thank you in advance for requiring council member case. Recuse, to recuse themselves from this agenda item. References and research includes conflicts of interest rules, California political practices, and conflicts of interest in local government ethics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. And I, I'm gonna take just a pause here for one second. And then I did want to remind everybody too, by the way, we, we are going to use our three minute rule tonight. So we're going to have, this has nothing to do with Ms. Thompson's presentation. We're going to have a three minute rule tonight because we have so many people on deck, I think, that want to speak tonight. So we'll be starting that clock in the, in the next presentations and things. Do we want to respond to Ms. Thompson's comments? Do we want to accept it as a comment and move on? What, what's the thinking?
Well, whatever the pleasure of the chair is, I'd be happy to address it right now, actually.
I thi- I think it might be a good idea for you to address it and also to share. Maybe Joe can share that we have consulted with the city attorney on this matter, but Bryce feel free to share if you think.
Yeah, so I have with me right here, entire folder filed out the rules of conflict of interest that require a council member to recuse themselves. And I've studied it very carefully. Have consulted with the city attorney who provided me with an additional memorandum. Which with essentially the same rules. I understand. I need a strong feeling on this. But what she doesn't realize is that the California law makes a distinction between the case when the city council is acting more like a judge. When a particular issue is before them. That requires a hearing where evidence is considered. And in that case, that's called quasi judicial. That is not what the underlying discussion is about. That is about a general city policy that the city may or may not want to enter into. Which does not have the same rules about bias or prejudgment because it's purely political question of general application. It may be that a council member has campaigned for office on a particular platform. That includes that issue. And people had voted for him or her because of their position on that issue. So it's not considered as qualifying conflict of interest. That's the difference. That's the reason I'm quite confident that I, I do not have a conflict of interest. That requires this qualification. I'm perfectly willing to listen to both sides, all the evidence that's presented, and make an impartial, fair and impartial decision. As I can do.
Thank you for that, just, you know, for that description or that explanation. Well, Councilor Kenny, appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Thompson, for being forthright in your concerns. We respect that. And, and I'm glad that we were able to hopefully kind of explain the process that we've gone through. I'm going to continue on. Are there other comments or questions about tonight's agenda? I've seen none. I'm going to bring it back then to the council and find a fine place. Here, so we are on approval of tonight's minutes, or minutes, excuse me, from May thirteenth and May twentieth. I did not see June tenth yet. Yeah, so there's no June tenth yet. So the question before the council is, are you comfortable with the minutes from May thirteenth and May twentieth? Any questions or comments? I have none. I reviewed them. They look fine to me. How about from the public? Any questions or comments about the minutes from those two meetings? All right, back to the council for a motion.
Although that we approved the minutes of May
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth and twentieth.
Okay, and I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. All right, so moved. And then the next thing on our list are our council reports. So these are reports from the councils, various committees, some events. And I would start to my right with Councilor Tattle.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Yes, hi. I attended a RDUAC meeting and they had a presentation by Mariko Mares. And we talked about the Golden Muscle. It's an invasive species. It's in Ruth Lake. Ruth Lake serves two thirds of our county, about ninety thousand residents in the city of Humboldt. This Golden Muscle is a huge invasive problem. It's originally from Asia and it comes, it clogs infrastructure, kills wildlife. It's a significant impact on infrastructure and economy. It also poses a risk in salt water. So there's a potential that we can have this invasive species in the harbor as well. She spoke a lot about the different decontamination, decantation.
Examination.
Decontamination, work that they're doing in Ruth Lake and other lakes. And yeah, it's, it's quite a problem. It was discovered in October twenty twenty four. And as we mentioned, we did most lakes up in Trinbridge County. Something that we need to be aware of here in Trinidad, certainly. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Councilor Kenny?
I attended the June HCOG meeting on behalf of the city. People may remember HCOG is the joint powers that you see that deals with transportation issues in Humboldt County. And we took action at that meeting to work some, or move forward some grant funding targets under the carbon reduction program that's been going on for a while. And specifically, your project that approved were from the city of Arcata for two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Were related to their bicycle, public bicycle program. The city of Blue Lake got seven, seven thousand five hundred and fifty seven purchased two zero emission maintenance vehicles. Fortuna got a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars to install ten vehicle charging stations down there. And that was the main substantive action that was taken at that meeting.
Thank you. I just had a quick one. We met with the Trinidad Rancho Ria in a government to government. There, Councilor Varela was there, as was our city manager, Joe Tagliabocchi. The topics ranged from confirming a scheduled date for our animal advisory committee. We talked about trails. Generally, we have a short discussion on the status of the Axolínguín Memorial Trail. Pretty much sharing, I think, what had been discussed in the public meeting. We talked about the Rancho Ria's Florida Rock and Interpretive Center agreements. And we are mutually working to do that with our respective council. We talked about the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District project that the Rancho Ria has for their hotel. And also the fact that we would be having a discussion about that tonight at the city council meeting. The Rancho Ria was receptive, I will say, and is in attendance for tonight's discussion in terms of working with the city should we choose to do so. We discussed some ongoing litigation, which I can't disclose. And then we had, let me just pause there. Did I miss anything? There is anything? Talked about our Jackie, if you want to. Okay. And then, and then we did have a brief discussion with the Rancho Ria on the twenty sixth, so four days prior. The city has been working with the Rancho Ria regarding some issues with, I would call it, seeps on the beach. And so I am thrilled that we are partnering with the Rancho Ria and working with them to mitigate these, to do testing and mitigation where necessary. We don't know yet if it's, you know, anything but water and maybe some bacteria. But we think that it's worth looking at and testing regularly and, and working together on it. So and yes, I think that's it for me. All right, any questions or comments from the council regarding one another's reports? Okay, any questions from the community regarding what you've heard us report out? Excellent. We will move right online then. So the next thing is our public safety report from, if we have one, tonight?
The call was not there.
Okay, so we're going to skip that tonight. Okay. So the next item then is our regularly scheduled items from the floor. So at this time, members of the public can comment on things that are not on tonight's agenda. So if we're going to talk about it later, this is not the time to talk about it. But if we're not, this is a great opportunity. So with that, we'll be right over to you.
And I've been meaning to bring this to Joe, who gave attention, I'm getting, but I walked with her just now. The thermoplastic scrapping that was done last week was completely disintegrating. And it seems to me that it's supposed to last a lot longer than that. And so there's all this plastic shards and water present that resonates. All of it's going down in the tarso. And I just feel like that is not a good job. It should come with a rest pad and redo it. All really.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know.
Sure.
Other public comments about things not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Johnson and Mr. Barry.
Good evening. My name is Richard Johnson and tonight I'm representing the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust. If most of you have seen the advertisements and posters around town for me that the land trust is sponsoring tomorrow night. And I just want to read a little bit of information on that meeting. The Trinidad Coastal Land Trust is excited to launch the Moonstone Beach Coastal Resilience and Public Access Planning Project. With generous funding from the California State Coastal Conservancy, this seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project needs to ensure safe, sustainable public access to one of Humboldt County's most treasured beaches. We want to protect the spirit of Humboldt, making sure that Humboldt, excuse me, Moonstone Beach remains accessible and resilient no matter what is ahead. Tomorrow night's session is, is, is open to everyone. And we invite the entire community to share your experiences with that Moonstone to help us guide the state-funded planning project, which is focused primarily on coastal resilience and public access. And we want everyone, no matter what your ability, to come and contribute and help us make this a very successful project. Thank you.
And did you say what time it was tomorrow?
Sorry, sure.
You may have.
Tomorrow night, July ninth, six to eight p.m., right here in Town Hall.
Town Hall, okay. Thank you.
I would just like an update on the engineer that's continuing to look at the business across the science domain.
Do you want to update or should we?
I think we'll come back with more information in September, but we do have some information. So latest information is the engineer that we had hoped would continue this work has been told by his insurance company that they won't cover his work. So we are kind of out of options and bringing this item back to council for a discussion on how I see with this.
Yeah, so we'll make sure that's on the agenda for the September meeting and then the council will make a decision what to do.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, other, yes, other items to report, please?
I just wanted to, I was going to comment on the public safety, but you know, we had the lockdown here. Took a long time for the sheriff to respond. I haven't been able to come and ask it, but I promised I would. So some of the parents are rangers at the park and they were like, we didn't get called. And so the comment was just, could the sheriff work with the park rangers and other public safety people that are in the area? So that, because they could have, you know, gotten hurt like five, sorry, because they were patrons of the park. So that was just because I think it took like fifty minutes for the sheriff to come. Of course, all the parents throughout the lockdown happening. So anyway, that was, that was, I mean.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Any response needed on that or?
I'll follow up with time. I'm sure that Principal Superintendent has followed up, but I'm.
Yeah, I just, I haven't been to the meeting since that happened, but I promise that I'll come.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll definitely, he's not here tonight, but I will definitely talk with him about it. Other items from the floor tonight?
Twenty twenty three, the council authorized. My neighbors, my neighbor Justin, sorry. The council authorized my neighbors to fill in the application to, okay, to see other. Eighteen thousand dollars for the application. The application is supposed to be revised. And it's a vintage Laco, was sent in though, two years. Now the city wants more money for my application. I think the city owes my neighbors money. And Joe is leaving soon. I don't want this to drag on another six months, year, two years. I had an interest, we've been getting a word, but we will not be able to. I just wanted to express that and I hope to maybe have a conversation with the counselors before he leaves, for the remainder of this manner.
Thank you.
I think I have a thought session done. Trevor and I have been discussing that over the past several days, so if you have any comment.
No, I think it's moving forward to Laco directly and the city still be involved. It's moving.
Because they just say, just kind of stuff, they found that they're not in city limits, so it's going to take a little while.
Understood. Other, and, you know, some will follow up, so offline. Other items from the floor? And there's, Andrew, you're online. We see your hand if you would like to make your public comment.
Hello, thank you, Andrew Orahowski. I have a quick request for all council members that they positively attest that they are indeed residents of Trinidad. Owning property and residing in outside of city limits would disqualify you from serving. So I'm just asking as a request before the meeting progresses that each council member attest that they are indeed residents. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess I'll address that for now, which is that every councillor in this room is a resident of Trinidad legally and has been vetted by our city attorney. We are aware that occasionally there are situations where people are temporarily residing outside of town. And in those cases, we are discussing it very regularly. And we'll address it when it, when it's appropriate, I think, would be my best, unless anybody has anything to add.
I think I would just add there that each council member at this table has been vetted and they each council member at this table has been vetted and they meet the standards that they were seated on. Those, those standards have not changed since they were seated.
Yes, yes. And we're, but we, we are. You know, we, we follow this kind of stuff very closely and, and have active dialogue. So thank you for your comment and appreciate the concern. Other comments are, I'm from the floor. All right, thank you. I think with that then we're going to go ahead and move along to tonight's consent. So this will be the council first controlling. Are there any questions, anything anyone would like to pull?
I'm gonna ask the number four before we move to the end of tonight's agenda.
Any objections to that from other council members? I'm fine with that. Anybody? All right, we won't vote on it yet. Let me go because I need to go to the public. Are there any members of the public who would be concerned about us pulling item number four from consent and putting it at the end of the agenda? Okay, I don't see any passion around that from the community, so we will go ahead and do that. So is there emotion? I'll, I'll go ahead and get us started. I'll approve the consent. Moving item number four to our regular agenda at the, to the end of our regular agenda. And Jack has seconded all those a favor. All right, so that passes unanimously for the consent to be addressed with number four in the agenda item. So now we're ready to get on with tonight's regularly scheduled program. And the first item is our discussion decision. Oh, please go ahead. Sorry, we already, we voted, but I'll open back to public comment.
I just had a question regarding item number five, the construction work, the Ener-type project. And my concern relates to any construction staging of equipment that's going to go on. My questions continue to remain, where is that going to be? And is it gonna be properly screened? If it's not, we within city jurisdiction, it's going to be properly screened for our neighbors, where it does end up as a person the entity that's making the contract. But across the street from a field that's the number one staging location, it is impactful on the neighborhood, it is impactful on the community. And there are simple things that can be done to manage that. So I just asked you, please make sure it happens every time there's construction in the city. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. And I don't think we need to, I think, point taken. So we're, and we voted on the consent, so I think we're gonna go ahead and move on. So, and this is again, the item number one, discussion decision whether to confirm the planning commission's recommended approval of the Euroc Indian Housing Authority Housing Project. Twenty twenty-five dash oh one, this is a CDP or coastal development permit and a conditional use permit for the development of five single-story, single-family residences. Approximately four hundred and fourteen square feet with related infrastructure on a three-point-one acre undeveloped parcel. I will mention that the planning commission has already had two meetings on this and they have approved the design review, the grading permit. They have recommended approval of the CDP CUP as of June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. And for those of you who don't know, this is located on the eastern edge of Trinidad city limits. So it's situated between Highway one oh one and Northwest Haven Drive. So it's actually the parcel, if I say this correctly, just beyond the Hidden Creek RV Park. So right adjacent to that. And I'm going to turn it over to Trevor, our city planner, to take us through this topic.
Yeah, I'll just note that, you know, it's kind of an odd situation. The planned development zone is designed as kind of a mixed-use zone. It was applied to a lot of the larger properties in town, so that people could kind of come up with non, non-traditional types of developments, clustered kinds of things. So that was the intent and all uses in the planned development zone require a use permit. For that use permit to be approved. So it's, so it's a little bit of a, of a different situation. Don't see these very often, because we don't often have uses in town. So this is a purely residential use. The proposal does five single-family residences. The occupant is the Euroc Community Housing Authority. They do have representatives here tonight. Sure they want to say something. Able to answer questions. It's a, it's a three-acre parcel. Perfect Creek runs through it. There's about two acres of the three acres that are zone plan development. An acre along Creek corridor or repairing corridor, some special environment. In addition, it was found through the studies that were done for the project that there are also weapons along the bank of the creek. So that extended that setback further back. So there's only about an acre that's developed along the property. So five, five houses is about all they can fit. I still consider that a fairly modest development. It's considering that planned development allows commercial and mixed uses. The houses are clustered on one end of the lot, which tends to minimize the impacts. There was a CECL document, California Environmental Quality Act that was prepared to initial study and mitigate the negative declaration. That was approved by the planning commission in May. There are some concerns from neighbors in terms of the compatibility of the density with, with the neighborhood and the impacts on the neighborhood. I have addressed that and the staff for the, the project is consistent with the planned development. Parents even considering just an acre area. The applicant has met all, all the standards and requirements of the PTO. And it's a, I think it's an important project to meet the city's designated housing requirements. So the city is required to provide its fair share of housing. And there isn't much housing that happens in Trinidad. So we're about to come up on a mini round of housing allocation. So I think it's important in that sense as well. I don't think it's out of scale with, with that neighborhood, considering the surrounding uses around lots. So I mean, I have any comments that three houses would be more appropriate? And I just, I think that five versus three, this is gonna make a significant difference. Neighbors, I think probably would make a significant. There are a couple of considerations. Planning commission's recommendation and approval is unanimous. There is a sample motion staff is recommending approval on the first page of the staff report. The use permit findings are, are in there for you, but with the findings written in a manner to allow approval. And I've, I've included the proposed commission's approval and planning. Staff board being of plans and the.
Right, so council will go to you first for any question for Trevor, or I know that we have the chair of the planning commission here and members of the Euroc housing.
Derek, can you just highlight for us, my understanding from reading the material is that there was like a final meeting held between the neighbors and the applicant where certain additional concessions were made. I think there was gonna be an eight-foot fence, some other things. Can you just pull over that quickly for us?
Yeah, probably the applicant can add some more details. So they have met with the neighbors to try and address their concerns. And I, you know, they, they've provided some examples of some other projects that they manage. And so, yes, they have agreed to put a fencer on the property so that helps mitigate the privacy impacts, you know, retaining certain trees where possible. Leaving a buffer of trees and maximizing setbacks. Are some things that they've looked at. We've already required that lighting be downcast and minimized. I will, I will let the applicant speak.
Was the fence all around the property? I thought it was just between the, I guess, the nearest ear to the south.
That's the one that's of very importance, I think. And I'm not sure, I mean, for, for them, they would probably, their tenants would like a fence along the back.
Yeah, yeah. And I also noted that in your reply to the CECL letters indicated that the coastal commission has reviewed this at some level.
Yeah, so, yeah, and Department of Fish and Wildlife also does it in the site as well and maybe reports. So the CECL process included a wide notification process for a variety of state and local agencies. County, local and state offices of resource agencies. So, yeah. Coastal Commission did review it. They did request some clarification on the weapon report. So there's some different standards for weapons and explosives and not separate explosives. They got that clarification and they had no further concerns. The project is not appealable to.
There are questions for Trevor? I guess I would. One thing I would say is that I am I feel very supportive about having Euroc tribal members moving into the city of Trinidad. And I feel that this is in keeping with our desire for inclusivity. And, you know, for, and I would welcome the Euroc tribal members. Essentially welcome them back to Trinidad in that sense. And so I, I do have, initially I looked at it, I thought there was, you know, some density involved. And I know I've had public comments and concerns have been expressed. So we'll, we'll go to public comment in a moment. So you can hear those directly. I did look at, you know, I'll disclose, I looked at the property today and I do see how it's a large property, but there's a big, there's a portion of it that's unbuildable. So that was a challenge. I did also look through all the paperwork and the planning commission did do a very pretty thorough job. I mean, and the applicant from stormwater to fire safety, septic, you know, the environmental and cultural reviews, et cetera. So there, I do feel like there's been a lot of work on this. And so I'm really pleased to see that due diligence across the board. So. I have one kind of tactical question, I guess, or when I was looking at the property today, I did see that there is a Jason property. I think it might be two-five-two West Haven.
Just to the south?
Yes, just to the south. What, did you already say, maybe you said, what, what's the setback? Development in that, that property?
There, it's a minimum setback is ten feet is required, but it appears, so they haven't actually marked the property lines. The applicant said they were gonna go out and look at that one closely again, maybe to have some more information. But it looks like there's gonna be a, a much bigger setback between the developments.
It meets the minimum that they are considering even doing more if needed. And, and I understand that these are, they're just, they're single stories, so they're under our twenty-five foot minimum. Yeah, okay. Well, I think the council then, if we've asked our questions for now, we will go ahead and go to public comments. And any questions or comments from the public on this project? All right, I see no.
I'd like to make a comment. A little late. Well, this lady, I'll go to her first, but I'll let you go after her.
Can you please come to the podium?
Yeah, I'll go after this lady.
Okay, Paul, were you gonna make a comment? Okay, excellent. Thank you.
I just want to note that the property to the north of this is a drop off.
Yes.
Much denser.
You're talking about the Hidden Creek RV park, correct?
Correct. So I feel like it's in keeping with the neighborhood. It's reasonable to have five houses there. And I also welcome the Euroc.
Thank you. Sir.
I'm tied to Donald. I just, I'm here a little late. Lucky to be here all, and I came for the waterline comments, but I live on West Haven Drive. And I guess you guys are just at the edge of the city limits with this project you're talking about. And I wasn't sure if, I wanted to jump in because I wasn't sure if it was infrastructure for the water line.
It's actually inside the city limits, just to clarify. Yeah.
And then, bless you. I know how hard it is for people to stay here with vacation rentals and all. So to make it more neighborly and the reason why I jumped up was just, you know, because you're talking about setbacks and I didn't understand it was a, it wasn't industrial, you know, water line, it was more residential. So, you know, you guys are great. And I just wanna give you my blessing and just feel that while I'm here, you already have the natives planning approval. But you can throw in a little window, the round window on, on it, or, you know, how a lot of places open the meetings with acknowledgement of the ancestor that you're stepping on. But it would just be a great thing. And I did get up here to say, you know, I was wondering about the setbacks. And it is a beautiful setting. So, you know, that's a, and it'll just be an enhancement for everybody, because it's so close to where you're at. Thanks again, a little on West Haven Drive and trying to keep it.
Thank you.
City council, city staff, members of the community. My name is Susan Rottweiler. I'm at Fuki Ford Northwest Haven Drive. And I as well fully support the addition of new housing in Trinidad. I also support the cluster development that is proposed for this project. Unfortunately, I would part the waters with sugar on the density issue. I can't support the use permit for the project as it is proposed. The difference between three and five in terms of traffic alone on West Haven Drive could mean the difference of ten or twelve vehicles. I think the size and intensity of the proposed development is unnecessarily out of character with the neighborhood. The trailer park that is directly across from me has been intensely developed. And that is zoned that way. Planned development, yes, is commercial application, but it is a large parcel and only one acre of it can be developed. The density from where I sit of the project is similar to urban densities in San Francisco, not Trinidad. The proposed density, as I mentioned, will negatively impact health and safety as well as the welfare of the neighborhood. Particularly the neighbors to the south are most heavily impacted. The traffic generated from the development alone will negatively impact safety and traffic patterns on already narrowed, overtaxed and frankly dangerous West Haven Drive. I have fences up in the front of my house for just that reason. I believe that these concerns can be mitigated by decreasing the density of the project. And I can and will fully support the project if the density is decreased. Even a townhouse kind of arrangement rather than all spread out. The septic system that's proposed for this is absolutely huge. And I believe the way that it's designed, it couldn't be done any other way with five individual systems. There's not the space to do it. So I would propose as a condition of approval for the use permit tonight that the density of the development be limited to three, possibly four at a maximum. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Ms. Rottweiler. Other public comments regarding?
Name's Frank Chuck and I'm, me and my partner and my kids who live right next to the boats. And I guess I mostly just concerned about traffic, um, and the density. Um, if there's going to be six people possibly living in each house, that would be thirty one people in a small parcel of land. Uh, that's where the cars gonna go. And people already drive super fast on the road. It's not safe to walk on it as is with kids and pets. Regarding the fence, um, you guys, uh, they keep saying that there's gonna be a fence. So on the paperwork, it said there's no planned fence. So it's kind of contradictory. I'm not sure what's going on with that. Do you answer that? But nothing's actually written that says there's going to be fence. It says there won't be one actually, or they don't have, or I'm not sure. Uh, so it'd be nice to have a clear answer on that.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can ask if they're, uh, comfortable answering that question. I, okay.
Um, but I wrote you every one email also.
Yes.
Thank you.
We read it and yeah, thank you for sending that. Did the, um, York Housing Authority want to address any of those questions or make any, i- i- you're welcome to make any comments you'd like based on what you've heard.
It's got proven up. It's Richard order, represent pretty valuable consulting engineer. He was engineer on record for this project. If you see council and your staff, I'm just a public, I will address it by May. The comments received from the public can address every single one of your concerns and more if you have some. So let me address, uh, there's some comments from the public in terms of density and subject. We have met the project, has met all city ordinances and the Humboldt County requirement development standards. Uh, therefore for density, um, septic, and we did an in-depth investigation cumulative studies of, of different impacts uh, in relation to the subject, communal setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, and again, this says, you know, this has been added through the planning commission twice over and, uh, I think you know this stuff. Uh, in relation to traffic, um, I do understand that is a concern and has been wasted. Or we're actually, you know, independently pursuing and we've been in contact with Bernada, who was just so, uh, reforming. We've been pursuing with Humboldt County to see if they would be interested in putting a speed bump so that immediately, uh, Jason, there, Bernada. I have another impression that she has collected signatures from, uh, from the name. Yeah, you know, just due to our professional, um, actions we have. Just gonna have been exploring for sending back to them as well. So again, in the interest of assist in the neighborhood and listen to their concerns and we're active in addressing.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
I'll be very brief. In terms of the neighbors, we have met with, uh, and with every single neighbor, so they're in person, uh, by phone call or by email. And we have heard their concerns. We have done our best to mitigate them as well. Uh, in terms of the fence, I do want to make clear, we are putting in a fence. We are, um, the setback is eradicated as ten feet from the property line. However, we want, we wanted to ship the development as far away from the southern neighbors possible, just to provide that added buffer consideration. So as of now, we haven't delineated exactly where the property line sits, and it's approximately twenty five or thirty feet away from the property line. Well, we could have done ten and eight foot fence on that bordering line. Also enhanced the fence, not necessarily a cedar fence, but will also enhance that rear fence just for interest of safety against, you know, uh, next to the corner or everyone. Um, so setbacks, support for the York community. Last thing, if you want to say thank you, Mayor, and, uh, city council for the support for the choice of your community. We're excited about this project. We're giving it the intent and, and thought and consideration to it. About to address any other problems or concerns you.
Thank you. Thank you for addressing the comments. Good chat, uh.
I have a question about the parking situation. Is there a way to incorporate more parking or address that issue or the density issue? It sounds like there's a point eight acre parcel of land or point, point five acre parcel of land that you're gonna develop on. And there's a one acre, you know, developable, developable portion of the plot. So have you done anything to address that density question?
Yeah, yeah, I'm saying, obviously, we, we took care of the consideration of the layout of the parcel. We stood, we did, we personally did a survey also into depicting, not only Parker Creek, but also, uh, certain, uh, streams and, and springs and, and other repair of the zones and, uh, addressing setbacks against those. But it kind of really cornered us into a small area of the, of the, of the parcel. And then with that, it's septic as well. It was just, we've done our best as possible to provide the density, but also not, you know, have like old housing, like the apartment or something of that sort of, so just kind of individual houses. So we have arranged a basis multiple times trying to obtain the best scenario of what we have is, is what.
I'll just add a lot of the rest of that acre is the septic system.
All right, thank you very much. Um, anyone from the planning commission, um, wish to comment or you're just here for questions? Do you have hands raising? So, um, if you had anything to add, I'm just offering that option. Um, okay, then I think if there are no more public, okay. Supervisor Madron. Sorry, I didn't see, thank you for helping me, by the way, speak to House. Hands raised.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor and council members and members of the public, uh, consent. I think through private, uh, I, I understand the concerns of the neighbors. As far as a speed bump or speed table or any of those kinds of features, the county has a form and a policy online that you can pull down and, and look at. Um, and basically there's petition with your neighbors within a certain vicinity. We did this for Sixth Avenue when we put in two speed humps last year. And I know you guys have put in a bunch of speed humps in town, your own policy. So you, you need to get that petition down that includes support from a majority of the neighbors. Uh, it's not fifty percent, it's like a significant majority doesn't actually give a percentage. And the fire department, you know, because it can slow things down, but not by much. If you build a speed table and then a hump. And it's paid for by the neighborhood or the developer. The county doesn't pay for this. We don't have the money. So that's how that would work if you want to, uh, request that and work with your neighbors. I mean, I think probably West Haven Drive could use a couple of speed tables along. People start getting up to pretty high speeds, forty, forty-five miles an hour, so exception. I will say that looking at the property from the road, it's really got a very dense young standard of, of, of trees on the flat. Down in the creek part of it, uh, there are older trees, they're more wacky spaced and a lot of the lower limbs have dropped off. And it's a recurring wetland environment. So the fire danger is not real high down there, but up on the terrace itself, it's a pretty high fire danger. And frankly, some forest thinning to try and thin out the little small stuff and maintain bigger trees with some limb. We go a long way towards reducing fire danger. A lot of us have parcels like that, where we probably can be doing a lot of forest thinning work. And you can actually get some funding to help with that to NRCS and some of their agencies. So just wanted to share those thoughts, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on this project? Okay, then I'm gonna go ahead and bring it back to the council for final thoughts and, um, and or motion.
Uh, I watched, uh, both of the planning commission meetings. They were intense, a lot of different comments on both sides. Uh, just, yeah, thanks to planning commission for all their hard work and vetting this and bringing it to the table. Um, uh, personally excited for the York community to have a footprint here. Uh, they might someday be on the council or planning commission or this or that. So, um, also excited to, um, see that they, they're, they can have grant funds to have help with playgrounds and sidewalks and other community things that they've done in other communities. And, um. Yeah, um, dearest to know if the cherry tree will be still, uh, not gonna be chopping that down.
Yes, that we, I'm sorry.
No, that's where it was the neighborhood.
Specifically, we've watched this.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you, yes.
Other thoughts? All right, um, does anyone want to entertain?
I got a few comments.
Please.
Out of here. So I read the, all the material in the back of very carefully several times, actually, because it's a pretty detailed analysis. You're not the square, but. Her house and all the references to the general plan and this and that. So it was a lot of, uh, mental gymnastics to follow along with it. And it was interesting that apparently we've only proved one newly constructed house in Trinidad since twenty eighteen. Anyway, we're supposed to, by twenty twenty seven, we're supposed to have eighteen new houses. So a little behind the eight ball on that, on that rubric. And I took a ride out there this morning on my bicycle to look around a little more, although I, you know, lived here for some odd years, so I'm familiar with, uh, that new river, which are road and everything. It is, you know, it's kind of an interesting because it's right on the edge of the city. So it's right in that zone between where the city stops and sort of say, well, it's the county, but country starts. So I, I can see how the neighbors are very sensitive about, you know, does this fit in with the character of our, of the area? But I think that that gate and everything does a good job showing the, the other developed parcels in the area. And I, I really couldn't find any real serious inconsistencies between the character of the neighborhood before and after this project. So I'm, I'm, I'm supportive and, and willing to approve it, but I do have a couple of conditions that I think we should add. Yeah. The code that we're operating under does allow city council to add conditions. Even, so I'm gonna recommend that we add, uh, number one, that a fire hydrant must be installed. It's like there rather than leave it up to the discretion of the Trinidad Fire Department. Because our department is in a little bit of disarray right now. The membership's down and, uh, we have a chief, he's actually from West Haven and so forth. So I think the council should step up and say, we want fire hydrant there. Um, number two, I think, um, we should make sure that the tribe includes a waiver of its immunity so that we can enforce, um, these conditions if necessary. Because without that, um, it just can't legally be enforced. I don't see any reason to put conditions on a project if they, they can't be enforced. Number three, as Supervisor Madron, uh, I understand him, he said that if a speed bump is approved under the county petition process, it, um, has to be given by either the developer or the neighborhood. So I think we should, we should ask, we, we should have the applicant pay for that speed bump if they, if it gets approved by the county. So those are the three conditions that I would, uh, suggest that we add to the existing ones.
I have a question about the fire hydrant. And does anyone know what the closest fire hydrant is?
Yes.
Where is it?
It's down at the corner of West Haven Drive.
At the corner.
Frontage Road, which would put the, the new one about roughly about the same distance they are in the city generally from each other.
Yeah, and the new developments too, all have fire suppression, is that correct, Robert? Yeah, so now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But as Supervisor Madron pointed out, the, the, the dense young forest, it represents a little bit more of a fire danger. So.
Um, and any comments? Well, go ahead.
Uh, and the stipulations you want to add sound fine to be, with the exception of, um, the speed bump or table, um, being afforded by the person doing the project solely as opposed to shared by the community. Uh, the point was made that, uh, people drive too fast on their street already and there's not five additional homes. It doesn't seem to me that it should just fall on that person or that dog along. So I have the exception of that particular one.
That's a good point. Perhaps we would say they, they pay half and the community pays half. The neighborhood.
I guess.
Uh, rather, they, they decide as a momma. I don't decide how we, maybe they're.
I think that would most likely fall on cities, uh, holders to pay for that. And we paid for the, I, I believe we paid for the speed bumps on Ocean.
Yeah, this is a county road.
Oh, it's county road.
It's county road.
And the comments in town.
We have to apply for counties. Okay, the county should pay for it, but versus the developer, but it could be a shame.
Apparently Supervisor Madron said their policy is that either the developer or the neighborhood.
Okay. Uh, uh, let me pause for a second. Um, Ms. Rotwine had a comment, so I'm gonna open back up to public comments just briefly. Did you want to weigh in on that, Susan? Cause you might know some background.
Yeah, typically speed bumps like sidewalks, like other things are putted by the developer. Whoever's doing the newest development, that's who puts the bill. You develop on Central Ave, you pay for the sidewalk in front of your property. So I see it as the same sort of thing. It's a condition of development.
Thank you. All right, back to the council. So, so I think, um, what we're saying is if they get approval for a speed bump, that they would pay for it. Because I think we, we don't want to make, uh, we don't want to make, uh, like, it takes a, like, we know how long it took us to get speed humps in Trinidad. So, um, so I would, I would support that. If a speed bump is approved, then they pay for it. Cause it could take years. Okay, and then immunity.
May, may, I'm sorry, may we comment on these?
Yeah, yes, please.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Nicole Sager, I'm the executive director of the York County Housing Authority. I actually don't have any issue with your speed bump or your hydrant. Uh, my issue is more with the limited waiver of sovereign immunity. That's negotiated between attorneys and there's usually a mechanism for that, like an MOA between governments. So can you please specify that mechanism that you're saying that you would like that? And that takes time to be negotiated because waivers, sovereign immunity is limited to these conditions. So cannot be a condition prior to your certificate of occupancy? Or you think that should be prior to pulling this permit? Because that is a totally different process that is definitely affecting whether we do this project or not.
Well, I, I think, uh, I'd see it as, you know, I mean, we, we pretty much need that in order to have meaningful all this process of putting on conditions if they're not enforceable or wasting our time. So I, I think that should be a condition in whatever process, um, the tribe has to go.
If they're applying, they're enforceable. I mean, we, we build in City of Arcata, City of Yarica, whenever asked for a limited waiver, we pull a permit. So I, I'm understanding your concerns and that usually is an MOA or an MOU, government to government, or you have a limited waiver to enforce specific grant conditions or something like that. And you, and I'm willing to have that discussion. I'm just saying that that takes time between attorneys and governments. And so if that's something you'd like to see, which is very exceptional in development, um, I, I think you need to be a little bit more specific with us on how that mechanism is going to be accomplished.
It seems a lot to, to go through for conditions of a fire hydrant and a speed bump, right? So it seems like.
Oh, no, no, it's, it's any condition that's put on.
Right, so, so has the city attorney weighed in on the planning commissions?
No, no, but, um, there are mechan- other mechano- mechanisms for enforcing the various conditions. So, um, as part of the conditions, we specify when they need to be complied with and who is responsible for reviewing them. So a lot of the conditions have to be, for example, notes on the plan before they get the building permit. So they're enforceable because the building permit's not issued until those, those conditions are met. And, um, building official has to sign off on it later. So that's how most of these conditions are addressed.
So the fire hydrant, for example, wasn't installed and the plans aren't signed off.
That's right, so we, the city would turn the water on until that's.
Well, I guess, uh, maybe in order to get a decision on prior to occupancy with you know, a year or more roughly, those, that could be hammered out and negotiated if the MOU is required. Why would they? Or prior occupancy would be reasonable. I'm frightened for that.
And it's, uh, so, and it sounds like that needs to be worked out probably.
And it's that so, and it sounds like that needs to be worked out probably between the tribal council and the city councils. So that's something that will have to come back to you or through the city attorney or it's not something if.
The city attorney.
I'm not hearing yet a compelling reason to do this. It seems onerous to me. I'm just throwing this out here because the conditions are being met as part of the process. And, and I'm concerned that we're adding an extra complexity, to be honest, for the council and for the, for the tribe, but.
Yeah, let me give you examples.
Yeah.
Say a couple of years down the road. Parking gets tight and there, people have a lot of visitors coming along. They, somebody decides, well, let's just, let's pave part of the leach fields and use that for parking. It's a nice big area that's open. You know, if absent a waiver of sovereign immunity, the city could not step in and say, hey, you can't do that, you know? We had, that was done in my neighborhood where somebody put gravel over their septic field, you know, leach field.
Yeah.
And the city had to come in and say, oh, no, no, you got to take that off, you know?
Are the weeds?
Well, yeah, we have a piece.
Yeah, so, yeah.
You know.
Same process. It feels like you're really, that would be the exact same process. Why would the tribe be any different than any other fee landowner who's subject to the same requirements as every other fee landowner in this area?
Well, the difference is that any other fee landowner, if they just said, no, I'm going to leave it like, like it is, could get into court and made to, you know, buy it. Whereas the tribe cannot, absent the waiver. That's a very significant difference.
The York County Housing Authority is a corporation of the tribe and they very well can be fined and have just as many issues lugging against their fee property as any other landlord.
So maybe a way forward is that we, because I think we need the city attorney to weigh in. I'm not sure I a hundred percent, I understand your point, Bryce. I just want to know what the best mechanism is for proceedings. So we could have a conditional approval tonight that potentially, let me throw this out because I'll need some, we need to discuss this. But we could have a conditional approval for the project with the inclusion of a fire hydrant, inclusion of the speed bump to be, if approved, to be paid by the developer and the, and the city attorney would, would give us, advise us on the proper immunity vehicle, I guess I would say, so that we can accomplish what you just described. And it's, you know, I think we need to maybe have a discussion about that. So I think that's the conditional approval is. This.
It seems like you asked that of any LLC or any other developer that comes to the area that they want to give a study of. Or any other corporation immunity that they might ask to build in their area. I mean, that seems.
Yeah, it seems like your point is you haven't really liked the city attorney to weigh in on, on how, what that would look like with the thought.
Well, I just.
That would be my, I would just say conditionally, you could make your same motion, but condition it on the city negotiating the proper vehicle for its ability to enforce previolation. That makes sense.
That seems a little vague to me.
Okay. I was gonna let Bryce please finish if you'd like and then, yeah. I'm just starting out ideas.
I would like to go ahead and approve this project that will develop itself from what sounds like a fairly fine project, but I understand your concern and so is there some way to amend your proposal such that we don't hold them up, but this can still be checked out?
Well, I, I don't know that this would be holding, holding them up. If we make this a condition and they determine we can't live with this condition, then they can come back to us and we can think about amending the conditions we have imposed. You know, I, I have a hard time believing that the tribe would resist doing a limited waiver in a case like this because.
Oh, I'm saying a limited waiver can be negotiated. And it happens over time. It's something that is going to happen and it's going to take a few months. But there's usually a mechanism like an MOU or an MOA between a government to government relationship that structures that limited waiver. There has to be a document structuring that. And you're just telling me based on a permit that I'm trying to pull that I need a limited waiver? And so that's where it doesn't make sense. What exactly are you asking me for? An MOU between the governments? Because there has to be a mechanism for this limited waiver and it's not in the permit.
Yeah, so this is my concern with making a legal framework, a condition of approval right now is because we're not, we don't have the city attorney weighing in on that, that legal framework. So they're saying that you don't need that. You're saying you do need that. I just, I agree that, you know, there should be, you need to be able to enforce. So I see your point, Bryce. I'm not, I'm just looking at what is the, what is the way forward here, vehicle perspective? And then, you know, legal instrument.
I, I think.
The attorney weigh in on that.
I, I continue to believe and I will, I'm going to make a motion that we rephrase the waiver requirement to something that has to be met before the certificate of occupancy or before actual occupancy. And that gives us plenty of time to work out the details.
Yes.
Along the way. That would be my motion, recondition.
Yeah, so there are three conditions and you.
Was there a re?
Yeah, maybe restate in a nutshell.
Okay, number one, a fire, a fire hydrant on the side. Number two, a limited waiver of immunity before occupancy of the structures. Number three, if if the neighborhood is successful in petitioning the county for a speed tunnel installation, that that also be made a condition of, of the project. And that the cost of that will be borne by the applicant.
All right. Did you want to say something?
Yes, yes. Can we put a time limitation on this speed bump? I mean, you know, it is in the neighborhood, and before we want to support this. Yeah, you know, it is also a mechanism and endeavor by the neighbors and whatever to, to provide that as a, you know, the sense of perhaps before certificate of occupancy or something. Limitation of that, I don't know, just suggestion. Sure, if, if, if they, if they obtain the permission from the county before their certificate of occupancy issues, then the developer pays for this, for the construction.
Right, that's the notion.
And that's sort of like the second condition, could there be some sort of caveat if like the city attorney doesn't agree with you or feel that that's necessary or haven't had that reviewed by the city attorney? Have a little.
Like if, if Russ were to come back and say, it's not necessary, we can enforce with the existing relationship. I think you're probably right, but I just.
Well, then we could amend it.
Yeah.
Well, I think you could also say the limited waiver of travel immunity or other mechanism to pass regulations acceptable to the city attorney.
Yes.
All right, that's the motion on the floor. Motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Motion? Second back.
All those in favor?
I'm aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. If I can go to public comments now, we've voted, I'm sorry. But feel free to catch me offline. Okay, so that is the conclusion of that agenda item. We are going to go ahead and skip forward really quick to item number three, which is the town hall renovation project. And I will turn it over to our city manager for our staff report.
Thank you much and quick will be the key word here, bear and members of the council, those of you watching here and at home. So that we have for your consideration, a budget adjustment request for a front win, for a window and trim and front porch cost increases and dry rock repair. So this is before you earlier in February. We thought we had a very good engineer's estimate. Our belief inspector is helping us on this. Turns out to be wrong. It's very low compared to the prices that we got back. We had two prices that were very close to each other, right around sixty six thousand dollars. And took the lower of those two choices. It's a local builder. That is asking for seventy five thousand dollars for contingency, rot repair and a window replacement. The second item on this list is the front porch at town hall. Our earlier estimate was around four thousand dollars. That's what we asked for in the budget. Came back at around eleven thousand four hundred and seventy nine dollars or exactly eleven thousand four hundred and seventy nine dollars to remove the indoor outdoor carpet, clean and prep the porch and place the coating on the concrete surface. We're requesting a fifteen thousand dollar budget adjustment, so ninety thousand dollars total for complete the town hall window replacement, rot repair and the front porch service rehabilitation project. I've been answered questions that you have.
Great. Any questions, Spirit Joe?
Does that include painting the front or?
It does not include painting the front. We will bring that back in September. We have a price for that as well. Well, I'm a knock of painting gave us price, but we wanted to get this going as quickly as possible.
Any other question?
We have this in our budget. Did we plan for this?
We, we have it in our reserve fund. Yes.
It came in a little higher than we expected, right?
It did come in higher than I expected. That's why we're back asking for a budget adjustment.
We have to take care of our town hall in this rainy climate, having good, solid sealed windows is important. So I'm in favor of this.
Yes, and it's a good first step because the next step will be about a year from now or whatever we'll do the outside painting. So we had to do windows first, so. Okay, any questions or comments from the public on this proposal? Then Ms. Rothline and then Ms. Whitney.
I would concur with the costume accounting. I think this is an important project. We have a beautiful building and I appreciate staff's planning for the future and in phase taking care of the building. So good job.
Thank you. Whitney, did you want to comment?
Just, just to know why some of the public abides in proceedings using. Well, my understanding, the definition of sovereign, it's a sovereign nation, they have their own rules and regulations. When the this development goes in.
I'm sorry, I.
They have to follow, they have to follow, I'm mistaken, they have to follow the laws of Trinidad.
So we can't, the problem is Paula, that we, we can't, and we can no longer accept comments, public comments on the project because we've already voted.
Okay, I did wonder. It's used by some in the public funds.
You can send a letter. We'll make it public. You can talk to me offline, but I'm sorry, I have to, I have to move us on. I apologize. I really, I hate to be so procedural, but we have.
Very busy. We all have a lot to get to.
We have a lot to go through. Exactly. Thank you for understanding. Other comments on the town hall rehab? Please.
If you can, of course. You were the full city manager that already hit this push through.
Agreed. All right, back to the council. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the, the current bid as, as. At least that the city manager is recommending.
Okay.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. It's great to see that. I really appreciate it. All right, so the next thing then is we are going to move on to the discussion decision to adopt the city managers, assistant city manager job classification into the city staff structure, which is timely.
This is very timely, Mayor. We anticipated having the classification compensation study that they package. However, recent events have expedited this particular classification. The assistant city manager is an important role in this organization. As the current city manager is, by agreement, thirty hours per week, generally leaving Thursday afternoon, Monday through Thursday afternoon. Because of that, that leaves a considerable amount of time when the city needs a city, an assistant city manager or acting city manager to fulfill that role in case when there is a need, whether it's an emergency or just the ordinary business of the city manager performs in the case of their work. It has been convenient to have the city clerk fill in on occasion. However, that is really not fair to the city clerk as it's been, it's not equitable. There hasn't been a lot of constant compensation or any compensation for that role. The work, increased workload, responsibility. So this classification will help clean that up. This classification does include the interim city manager responsibility as a part of the classification. So it cleans up a lot of the need that the city has, considering how this organization is built. This position was discussed during the FY twenty five, twenty six budget. The salary for his position was budgeted, however, we, I am asking for a one-time budget adjust, budget salary adjustment of ten thousand dollars. Assistant city manager Gabriel was, this was discussed last July as a part of an earlier reorganization. Unfortunately, never occurred and he was counsel committed that, that there would be to catch up to that back pay. And the ten thousand dollar number was the number that was floated back then. So I'm asking, also ask the council to approve a salary adjustment, one-time salary adjustment for ten thousand dollars for ACM as well with this budget adjustment and classification approval. Happy to answer questions that you have.
All right, thank you. And yes, we did approve a ten thousand dollar bonus retroactive now in addition to the pay raise that was agreed upon by the council with the budget cycle. I support this a hundred percent. I think Gabe's, as I think most people in town would attest, an asset to the city, asset to the city council. And, and it's well deserved and long overdue. So I don't really have any questions, just that comment. Thoughts? If we let you guys go first, I totally agree.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, and any comments or thoughts from the public, members of the public? Supervisor Madron?
What's our time? I think we all know this. Gabe is our institutional knowledge here in this community, literally. You want to know something, you call me, right? And Joe's been great. Going to miss you, Joe. You've been doing a great job. But Gabe is very deserving of this and we very much support what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Well, I, I would just note that if, you know, see it as how Gabe is now the interim city manager. If he elects in the future or if it comes to pass that he becomes the regular city manager, then he obviously can't be the assistant city manager at the same time. So there would have to be some reshuffling at that point, but definitely is extremely well qualified. So I'm comfortable with rating this designation for him. And we'll go on from there.
And I, well said, Bryce, and you reminded us that we should mention that Gabe will be the interim city manager and beginning August twenty eighth. So he's not only getting promoted as assistant city manager, but with Joe leaving, then Gabe will take over.
You announced that earlier.
Yeah.
But there's nothing wrong with emphasizing.
Thanks. Thanks for. Thanks. Thanks for so I'll reemphasize that I apparently. Um so I guess I would move to approve Gabe's promotion.
Did we have public comment yet?
We did. Yes.
Yeah.
Keeping each other on track. Thank you, Mayor Proten. Yes, and a second, so I made the motion approved. I total uh seconded. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so moved. Congratulations, Gabe. Two promotions. Okay, so with that, I think we are ready to go back to um item number two. And item number two is the discussion decision regarding participation in a feasibility study to join the Trinidad Ranteria in a drinking water pipeline connection project with Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. And before I turn it over to staff, I do have a tiny little preamble for this one. Pardon me. Um so I did want to say that um just to frame this discussion a little, and as I mentioned, we'll have a a three-minute timer on for all comments because I see that there are a lot of people online, a lot of people in the room, and there's going to be a lot of folks who want to comment. Uh but before I turn it over to Joe, I want to tell you kind of how how we're going to kind of set this out and also what I want to frame this discussion a little bit. Because I think it might have been confusing and um in just how we how we communicated this out. So sometimes explaining what something isn't is easier than explaining what it is. In this case, this is not going to be tonight, the city council making a decision on whether or not the Ranteria can build a hotel. So we will not, that's not in our purview and we won't be discussing that. Um it's also uh the Ranteria has confirmed that with or without the city deciding to connect to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. They are going to go forward with that project, the hotel project, and they are going to go forward with uh connecting to uh or approach Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District for a connection. So it's completely independent from from whatever the city decides to do. Um this is also not a decision about whether or not the Ranteria should source water for its project from Humboldt Bay. Again, the Ranteria plans to move ahead. So we're not going to be discussing whether what they do, okay? Um it's not a decision about uh connecting the greater Trinidad area to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water. So we are going to be discussing potentially getting water from Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District for the city of Trinidad within its jurisdiction, within its boundaries. We will not be providing water to West Haven. If West Haven wants water, they will have to approach Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District to get it. So I want to make that really clear. Um and that would be in any agreement that was signed. Uh I want to mention that the council, why is the council bringing this back? So we had a lot of comments that, oh man, we've been down this path before. Well, the council discussed this topic in twenty twenty one and at that time, it was at that time the council committed to the community that they would bring this back within three to five years. It's been four. So we are uh just trying to adhere to what we promise, try to keep our promises. Um there's a lot, a lot of material in the packet, three hundred and twenty some pages, I think. A lot of it's related to water. We didn't expect the community to read all that. We didn't expect necessarily that the council would have time to read all that, but that now you know where to find all those documents. You don't have to go hunting for. Um and then process wise, I just want to let everybody know that the way this is going to work tonight is I'm going to turn it over to our city manager. He's going to do a presentation. The council will then ask a few questions and make some comments. Then we'll go to public comments and then we'll come back to the council for a decision. And I'm just letting everybody know in case you're new to this process. Um council, anything to add before we turn it over to Joe?
I just want to respond briefly to uh remarks that Anita Thompson made earlier that made it sound like I'm against the Ranteria's proposed hotel in any way, shape, form. And that has never been true. My opposition was only to the uh existing proposal, which I believe is too tall and out of scale for the rest of the community. It would be an example of disorderly development, not against a hotel. So I think that's an important point that I am entitled to defend myself myself on.
Thank you for that. And and with that, then we will not be talking anymore about the hotel. Because thank you for, you know, setting us straight on that, that this is going to be about water and it's going to be about water. And um with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe for a presentation on.
Thank you, man.
Yes, what's going on?
Appreciate you interrupting. I'm uh happy to say that I did read every page of that. And I and I hope I can answer questions if people have them, but if I can't, I will be able to uh look them up and you can look them up and answer them yourselves as well. Uh okay, so uh next slide, Gabe. Okay. Just while Gabe gets set up, uh the purpose of this PowerPoint is to help uh set some a basic foundation for the discussion. Uh at the end of the discussion, it's going to offer some uh points to consider for the council and then uh and then and we'll go along with the discussion. So uh feasibility discussion, feasibility of end there discussion in my mind. The purpose of this discussion is to assess the feasibility of continued independent operation versus a potential partnership with the Trinidad Ranteria to connect with Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. Uh the recommendations are based on costs, resiliency, uh regulatory compliance, and more importantly, long-term sustainability. The objective objectives of the study should be to ensure that we have uh safe, affordable and reliable water supply. Little bit of background on the agencies. Trinidad Municipal uh Water is a water treatment plant and distribution system. Uh it's a T three plant and a D one system. We're a small coastal city. Uh the source of our water is uh Luffenholz Creek and we also have water rights to Mill Creek. Uh we have an aging infrastructure. We had some staffing challenges. We're currently kind of holding our own on that line and uh limited resources based on the size of our customer base and water supply uh the water uh our ability to uh meet the resource needs. Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District is a regional water supplier. They have a surface water source, much larger agency with many redundant resources. Uh we talked about that first bullet. We have three hundred and twenty-six service connections serving approximately a thousand customers, two hundred and sixty are inside and sixty-six approximately outside city limits. Uh our sources are Luffenholz Creek and Mill Creek. Um the surface intake, so we have a wet well on Luffenholz Creek. Uh it's says gravity fed, but it's actually fed by a pump uh in the in the well. It's a very small treatment system uh with somewhat limited storage. We just added a three hundred thousand gallon tank, but our business is limited to the size of the smaller tank, so about three hundred thousand gallons total right now. Uh we're governed by our city council's system and we're and the plant and the distribution system are operated by staff. Uh Humboldt Bay Municipal Water Systems profile, they serve approximately eighty-eight thousand uh through wholesale customers to their sources, the Mad River and uh up above that, I believe Ruth Lake. Uh surface water intake, large-scale treatment main lines throughout the region, special district with board oversight uh which is typical for a water district. Uh they're known for a high-capacity route, they're a reliable source. Very good regulatory compliance and they have a common scale based on their size that we do not enjoy. Creative analysis of these two systems. Trinidad is springy or creek-dependent, vulnerable to seasonal variation and drought. Uh Humboldt Bay, however, is is Mad River and the uh upper watershed lake. Much higher volume, better long-term reliability. Uh item V, there is a smaller-scale coordination system, basic testing product protocols and good water quality. Um I think we have good water quality here in Humboldt. I like the water. Uh Humboldt Bay Water Still Scale Treatment Plant, very rigorous testing, highly rated water quality. Uh infrastructure conditions, Trinidad's major pipelines, mostly due to deferred maintenance, limited storage, so we recently increased it. Uh Humboldt Bay has a modernized infrastructure with a robust capital improvement plan in place. Continuing with our comparative analysis. Uh Trinidad's majority full-time staffing with some unlimited emergency response. Uh Humboldt Bay has a dedicated twenty-four seven staff and a full regulatory compliance team. Trinidad has much higher rates, a higher permanent delivery cost because of our smaller base. And Humboldt Bay is where the larger customer base with economies of scale and a steady revenue stream, which helps them uh spread that cost across their larger customer base. Uh next slide, uh Trinidad's compliance challenges due to our age infrastructure and the staffing model is just, it's 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 we find it increasingly difficult to have the T three and the D one uh chief plant operator. Um it just, it's tough for a smaller agency and a smaller water system to to manage that. Humboldt Bay is full compliance with state and federal regulatory uh and regulations. Uh and with a larger staff, they have redundancy that we just don't enjoy right now. Uh climate resilience. Uh we are somewhat vulnerable to a single source, although recent studies on the watershed uh have uh definitely identified that that source is a little more robust than previously thought. Uh Humboldt Bay has a diversified infrastructure, redundancy supply. Um they're a larger water system. They just have assets and resources that we don't have available. Public capital costs, uh that includes pipeline construction, system retrofits, grants or funding opportunities for us, ratepayer impact for us is the loss of the Ranteria is going to be a uh a big loss for us. That's one of our larger customers, our largest customer. Uh and it's going to, we're going to have increasingly higher rates. There's just uh no way to get out of that with a smaller staff. Um and the regulatory environment that we live in, uh the rates, the the rates that we adopted in this last round of uh rate adjustments didn't even include uh the wages for the for the chief plant operator. Um this council or the past council uh made some very difficult choices and one of them was to kind of keep rates on the moderate side. They adopted the rates that were suggested by the rate study. Uh we would already be probably the highest in the highest tier of ratepayers and we would be going increasingly higher. I think we would be above a hundred and twenty-five. Gabe shaking his head yes uh right now and going higher in this five-year rate plan. So that's what's looking ahead for us. Uh just owning and operating our own water system. Uh environmental and public health benefits. Uh we do a pretty good job at managing our water system. Our water source is clean. Um and I think we do a very good job of managing that and as well as Humboldt uh Bay water is in the same quote. Um opportunities for us. So we have reliable water quality and enhanced reliability uh for Trinidad. We're we're continuing to try to improve the planet. We just got a measure Z, a forty thousand dollar measure Z, a grant award that's in place this year. So we're using that to buy some much-needed uh parts that have worn out. Um with this opportunity that we're talking about tonight, we will be able to cost share this with the Trinidad Ranteria. Uh we have been looking at grant funding opportunities both for the study and for the engineering and build and uh there's multiple grant opportunities for this type of project. The state is um encouraging consolidation with uh smaller water agencies to go with the larger water agencies. Um most of that is because of the regulatory risks that smaller agencies have and they ability to manage that regulatory risk. It's increasingly more difficult. Uh Trinidad is no exception. Uh with the larger uh this was Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, it's more stable rate structure, a more predictable rate structure. Some of the challenges, again, uh infrastructure investment is going to be needed to connect the systems. Uh some of that is going to be most of that. I've been told by staff and after looking a little bit, we're pretty confident that this could be a hundred percent grant-funded. Uh there are some governance and autonomy concerns. Uh owning and operating your own water system does come with some benefits. Um that's a double-edged sword as we talked about earlier. Uh we would have to have a some kind of a rate, some kind of an idea what rates would be and of course buying from uh our customers in the residential on our system. Points to consider, status quo. Right now Trinidad owns and operates our system. Is Humboldt Bay Water in operation for Trinidad's long-term water needs and uh regulatory uh challenges? So what are the financial and operational trade-offs? Uh what are some of the other advantages and impacts uh with Humboldt Bay Water or managing and maintaining our own water system? And then what are the next steps? So that I will turn this back to council for their discussion and questions if you have.
Right, so yes, let's start with the council. Are there questions or comments that you have to go? I mean, uh one thing I would, I guess, ask is um maybe recap a little bit about what's been done over the last like four years. And I know, Joe, you may not be able to jump. You probably know, but Gabe can jump in, but the Water Advisory Committee in twenty twenty-one recommended to the council that we increase our storage. So we now have a two hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank in place of our former one hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank. So for a total of four hundred thousand gallons in storage, so that was positive. With the Water Advisory Committee also recommended fixing leaks. And I think you guys just bought a new um tool to help you do that, right?
Yeah, we we bought a locating class uh using some of our risk management funds. So if it gets to this, we would have to do it the old-fashioned way, kind of figure out where it was at and then do a paw hole, they call a paw hole and dig up the line and try to locate it now. Uh with this technology, we can tie into a meter for uh the line up on the street and locate it in a much more efficient and effective fashion. So use great bunch for that.
Yeah, and some pipes have been replaced, I think.
And I guess we, I think we replaced six-albido pipe or something like that uh with the latest project.
And the reason, one of the reasons I'm asking you these questions is because I think the council or I'm aware, but I don't know if the community is aware of the investment that we've made in the infrastructure, um which I think is good and, you know, keep the plant running and keep providing. Um can you also, um one of you speak to the PWA? So there there's long been a uh recurrent suggestion that storage may be insufficient, that we may need more storage. And so I know we hired PWA, they made some recommendations. Can either of you speak to or Trevor? Um uh kind of where we're at with my understanding is that that stalled and was not, was a no-go, but I would like to hear from you what what the story is so that everybody knows.
So that you did do a very large study on uh sites. Uh I think they determined that it was going to be a million gallons. That would give us essentially ten days. It would, I think it was going to be three one-million gallon tanks. It would give us about thirty days of of uh raw water if if it was needed. The challenge with that is uh number one, while we might get grant money to help us build the tanks and and or lease the property, we would still be required to maintain those tanks for what essentially would be a rainy day, right? So you'd be managing and maintaining three billion gallons of raw water or something that may not, you may never need. Um it's a pretty heavy expense to ask the ratepayers, the three hundred and twenty-six ratepayers to to uh incur based on something that could happen once every ten or five or three years or, you know, even if it was every other year, every two years, it's an awful lot of money of infrastructure. And tie that in to build the tanks, to maintain the tanks and maintain the water, make sure this doesn't get stagnant. I mean, there's a whole lot of operational work that has to go around that. And so between GHD and the past uh lie, they decided that it wasn't a very effective model. They they kind of um get looking at other options.
Okay.
Yeah, on that subject, I, you know, I've thought about that a lot too. My way of thinking, a better approach rather than try to create a bunch of new tanks is just create a small lake or pond from both from an environmental standpoint and uh cost of construction and certainly there's no real maintenance costs under a lake, so. I happen to think that the general concept. I happen to think that the general concept is good. And it's just a matter of, you know, exactly what kind of equipment you use to uh go about that.
Uh one uh thing Brittany said, when I first came to Trinidad and I was talking to a few people on the street, talking to, I don't know how many times people asked about water and felt that they really wanted to know more and have a a sort of uh non-pressured uh decision-making about what was the best way for Trinidad to keep its water. And so I, I thought that what we, we're going to uh really vote on tonight was the feasibility study uh which would give us the information of comparing the two avenues. Um and uh so free of the emotionality that I guess each of us has, whether we whatever side of the discussion we land on, but feasibility study would really give us the facts. So I'm very much with that.
Yeah, let me just comment, Katie, the reason everybody was talking about water when you first came to town is we were in the middle of the worst drought we've had in forty years. So of course, it was on everybody. Fortunately, that time has passed now. For a couple of years, we've had normal rainfall amounts pretty much. So
Yeah, that's helped in that.
To put it in context.
Yeah, and the city, I'll point out also, uh did a drought contingency plan as a result of that drought experience. And we have had to invoke that drought contingency plan at least once in twenty-twenty-one. I think, did we invoke it again in twenty-twenty-three or just twenty-twenty-one? I can't, I can't remember. I know we had some other water emergency, but it wasn't drought-related.
It was twenty-twenty-four and it was based on leaks in the pubs.
Yeah, the, well, the leaks in.
In a fire, fire.
Yeah, and the fire that the tanks going, going down. But yeah, but there was a drought contingency plan execution in twenty-twenty-four.
Yeah, we created the plan in twenty-twenty-one.
What's that?
We created the plan. The state required it.
And ex- and executed the policy.
Yeah.
Yeah, so now we have the policy on the books that it's the.
I know, I, I was part of the, the Water Advisory Committee then when we created that and with the planning commission. But um my understanding was we created it first, then we executed because their drought happened after. Yes or no?
It was state requirement.
I don't want to lead witnesses. I'm just, okay.
That was state requirement at the time.
Trying to get to the facts.
All cities in the northern part of the state were having similar exercises.
Okay, I wanted to get to the facts because I've seen, yeah, I just want to be able to ask staff and and if there's a disagreement, then the councilors need to chime in. Um what other things have we?
I think, I think remain. Yeah, I'd like to bring up, um you know, we, we created this great intertie between Trinidad and West Haven and I would love to expand on that and uh perhaps do an intertie with the emergency intertie. This is like if, like, you know, something really cr- uh critical went down, we could pull water from West Haven and they could pull water from us. Why can't we do the same thing? Because of, you know, the Rancho Ria will have their water. I would, and they have a four-inch pipe from their facility to our facility. Why can't we create a?
Oh, that pipe, the, the, sorry, I thought you were asking about what?
Yeah, why can't we create this intertie so we could keep the residents of West Haven, you know, happy that we're not creating this new water resource and we're also protecting our city? Uh if our tank ever went dry, we could pull from the Rancho Ria's allocation.
I think that's an interesting idea and I, I had kind of, you know, sketched out kind of a hybrid approach too. I, I think where we're, and, and, you know, we'll open to public comments in a minute, but I just have a a lot of, um have spent a lot of time on this because of being on the planning commission, being on the Water Advisory and also city council. And I saw a lot of public comments with questions about a lot of different things. And so that's why, so, you know, forgive me, but that's why I was kind of just
Yeah.
asking all those questions to staff so we could get them out on the table. But um
So an emergency intertie, like, yeah, why can't we do a feasibility study on an emergency intertie?
Yeah. And I think, I think a feasibility study, one of the reasons I, I'll just opine that this keeps coming up is because we haven't done that. Because we haven't done comparative analysis to figure out whether it makes sense for Trinidad to have its own water system or should we hook up to Humboldt Bay? And we may decide, and I don't have a position on that because I have not been able to get the data to have that data-driven decision-making process. So for me, I'm with you and I think that could be one of the options that we look at. It's like an emergency intertie or but, but I just want to get kind of my position on the table because I don't really, I think people um, you know, think that, that the council has a leaning kind of one way or the other, as we discussed earlier. I think we just want to hear the information out there. Um and I think, you know, Bryce was, that's kind of what Bryce was saying is that he's, you know, biased and we want to just hear the facts, but I want to make sure that we are all facts. That's my, I'll get off the soapbox. Any other comments from the council?
I mean, I have a question about um firefighting. So it seems that um we don't have enough information at this time to to determine whether or not the city has sufficient fire demand needs in terms of our water capacity. Um and I'm just reading the GHG report and I'm on like one-seventy, on page one-seventy here. But it says, it's not known of the existing system today meets the standards for fire protection flows. Any future supply allocations should include an analysis of storage and pipe system capacity to meet fire demands of any allocation. And so I, I'm guessing I'm curious to Trevor or, you know, anyone else if they have an opinion on that. Uh or, you know, if, if that's included in the feasibility study, a greater analysis of what fire, uh a fire, an emergency fire situation.
So that wouldn't be that hard to uh to find out just from, you know, existing sources. There's like state-published standards for firefighting. We just wanted to isolate that issue. Track that down. It wouldn't be that hard. You wouldn't have to do a big expensive feasibility study to answer that question.
I think you might have to compare and contrast though. I, I, you would have to say what is the city's system capable of versus if we're connected to Humboldt Bay. I think that's the crux of the matter. It's not it's, it's, do we have the data or are we, are we kind of guessing that, you know, well, they're probably about the same?
You know, I think if we were, if, if we were hooked to Humboldt Bay, then we would have access to more water for a longer period of time. So we would have better firefighting capacity, but that doesn't mean we don't have adequate firefighting capacity.
Our, our, our water would be, it's, it would still be guided by the water tanks at the top of the hill because that's where the head pressure comes and drives our firefighting and water delivery here in town. So it's not a standard, you need the firefighting requirements. Um there's, even at the very end of the line, there's enough capacity to meet the minimum standards for firefighting.
Yeah, I would say the only thing that kind of worried me was when, and granted, it was a tank switchover, but it could have been something else. So our, because our, our system, our water plant's fifty-five years old and there's a lot of aging infrastructure issues. What happens is you have this like catastrophic failure. For example, where we had it flooded out and all the electrical went down. Or you have a situation where the plant's just, there's tur- high turbidity. And then we've got to like, you know, but all of a sudden we have to put out a fire. It seems like it's always the perfect storm. And I guess I've kind of had a front-row seat to this the last few years. And it's not pretty, you know, when somebody's house is burning down and they come to us to help them put it out. Fortunately, we were able to get them some water. But um that's just something I think to keep in mind is that you, you can rely on it as long as it's working. And so having a backup, having an emergency, um you know.
For us, man, I think the real, the real conversation since I've been here is can we afford the staffing model that we currently have? Can our rate pairs continue to afford the staffing model that we are going to be forced to incur in the years ahead of us? It's not water shortage, it's not water supply, it's not water quality. It's the rate payer and what they're going to be charged to run our own water system five years from now, ten years from now, fifteen years from now. We're not even covering what we need to cover right now. We're, we, the council decided that they couldn't afford the rate that we needed to supply.
We might find if we hooked up to Humboldt Bay, for example, that it's not less expensive. I don't know because we haven't done that. We haven't done that financial analysis.
I would guess it would be more stable and even more predictable.
I agree. I'd like.
I think that's one thing that we would find with an engineering feasibility study.
Yeah, and I think the comparative financial analysis of seeing, you know, this versus that. So that's, that's just exactly.
I will say that the Kenley bill is much lower than we are. They're on very lowest end of the scale. Just as a comparison.
Is there any uh estimate of what such a feasibility study?
I think, I think that the Rancho Ria is I'm just overspeed checking four-hundred-thousand dollars into their study. They're almost complete or getting close to complete.
That's what we, we've put into the project so far. There's a few other costs in there. So and, and.
They're not, they're not doing a feasibility study. Well, I suppose in a sense they are, but they have different concerns that.
I don't, I don't think it would cost us that. So, you know.
Well, I don't know, I don't know either.
Yeah, I don't know either until, so, so I think the answer is we don't know because we, we need to we would need to approach a company and get a bid with the parameters of what it is that we're asking for and then they would come back and.
They would definitely go the same thing that the Rancho Ria is going through now, which is an engineering how much water line, how big, what pumps.
Yeah, so this is the kind of discussions of, you know, that, that I think we want to have at the council level informed by community input. And then we also have the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District uh folks here, I believe. So um they are able to answer questions um if they can. So, yeah. What else do you guys, anything else to before we go to public comment?
I, I just have a question and I, I know I sound green and naive with this. I mean, I have um been a neighbor of Dwight for many years and so he's always included me in the water conversations and I always try to keep this uh, you know, aware and the rest of the issues as I possibly can, but I just wondering why there's such a firm boundary between Trinidad water and West Haven water? Why there's such a like strong want to disconnect? Because I'm, I'm curious if if we did lose Rancho Ria as a customer, bringing West Haven in to our water supply might solve a lot of these rate issues. And I, I, I'm not saying I'm a proponent of one thing or the other, but I'm just curious where, where this strong boundary has come from. And I recognize there's development issues and other things like that, but um I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to put the dots together.
They are their own water district. So it's, you know, similar to what you would have with Arcata and Eureka or other cities that found or have boundaries with each other. They have their own water systems and that's kind of how it's set up. So um it's not set up to consolidate at this point. There's no um, neither party is um sensing any real need. I think West Haven is now improving their water system. They just added a couple wells. They're um gonna be bringing a new uh water treatment plant online in the next year or two. So they're improving their water system. There just isn't, it's two separate water systems. That's kind of how they're set up.
Would West Haven at all be interested in a feasibility study? Or associating uh?
I couldn't speak to that, but the uh general, the general manager from West Haven Water District, Paul Rosenblad, is here. I think he'll speak to that.
No, they haven't so, they haven't so far.
So, so first off, um we have enough water at the, for people within our district. We build our new water gaming plant. We'll have, we think we have enough capacity to supply the existing homes that aren't connected to our system. The way our board and our district operate is very different than what the city and, and how the city council operates. It's really apples and oranges. And when we were approached by Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District initially, it's ten thousand dollars to participate in the study with no actual, how much the study would cost. And now or never, and no, at that time, uh emergency intertie wasn't on tape. So we're just, and, and as for consolidation, we're just our own. Um and, and we serve our community and, and packeted partner. With the city of Trinidad, we're really excited to have this emergency intertie. We're hopeful that this instruction goes smoothly and completed. I helped write the grant with my engineer and it's been a lot of work between our very different entities and engineering firms to trying to work on water residency in our community at large. That's kind of, we don't have water to supply you, but we're happy to help you.
Thank you.
Can, can we speak then to uh, do we have real numbers on what it would take to fund our uh our, our current water situation, you know, with our water plant? If, if we lose Rancho Ria or even just if them side of our how much would the rate be if the Rancho Ria was part of our system and if they're not?
That was in our rate study. So if you had that in your paperwork with rate table A, I believe. Preferred rate, if I'm not mistaken, A, I believe last year was a hundred and twenty-three dollars a month base rate. Um but uh this, and I think it went up to go out once, it's probably somewhere in the range range for this year if we had, if we had adopted that. Compared to the seventy-two dollars that it's now, so we're basically half of what we should be paying right now. And that's going to go up in the next rate study whenever that occurs.
Let me, let me just throw something out there, Gary. Might help clarify something for you. Um if, if the Rancho Ria were to completely disconnect from our system, there are people north of town in the visitor-serving facilities, uh the trailer parks and so forth, that the coastal commission gives higher priority to provide water to them that have been waiting for forty years for water from Trinidad. A guy from Emerald Forest was in here just a couple of months ago. I don't know if you remember that saying, hey, we, we need it. We've been waiting. We'll take it anytime. So I don't, the if we did lose the Rancho Ria, we would, we could, we could sell all the water we have already to other people that would make up the difference. So it wouldn't be like we'd suddenly losing all this money.
Well, we would have to do we have to annex that area in order to, okay, so there is a step.
Probably, yeah.
And build infrastructure.
Build infrastructure, right. We did, we did run a pipe to Califier, one and a half inch pipe, as you know, but that we, that, that by the way is a great example of restricting the pipe size to restrict development. Because we restricted it to one and a half, we, we put it out to Califier, no development has ensued, no issues, right? Now, of course, we're saying, well, gee, maybe we should have made it bigger because we could have something. But, but the point I'm making is that you can restrict development by restricting pipe size and through, you know, building codes and, or in the clothes.
You know, uh about restricting development, uh somebody in one of the public comments that was sent in made the point that, that uh development's really not uh our domain as much as it is the planning commission and the uh some of the agencies that deal with the coast. Right? So it seems like uh we, we, we are very worried about development, but it's really not. There, there's an avenue to uh address that that is not us.
Well, so, I mean, there's, there's a couple of different things. I mean, there are, you know, if the city were going to extend services, like Joe was talking about outside city limits, there's a process for that. Like it's going to be annexed. Uh we have talked about the annexation more recently and the fact that I and I think it's going to become harder and harder for the city to operate as a city at, at the current size. Um with the regulations over here. Um but the city council does have a role in, in development and land use planning on a, on a larger scale. So, you know, um one of the things I, you know, that I think about with this is that there's, there's better ways to regulate growth than making water. Limiting water is not an equitable way to, to that should be done through good land use planning, the foresight, you're looking at the community needs, looking at resource limitations through your general plan and other long-range plans and your land and the city council, those have a role in adopting those. Um, they would be drafted by the planning commission, recommended by the planning commission, city council proves those. Coastal commission has a role in coastal zone. And then as developments proposed under those regulations, that's where the.
Hello. Okay, thank you. Right, any, I think we so there's a lot more we can talk about, but I do want to open the public comments if you guys are ready for that. Okay. I I see a hint.
You have to make a procedural request.
Yes.
Since we're talking about, since it's about a feasibility study for. Uh, City of Trinidad, just when people come up, can they just state if they're a Trinidad water customer?
I can ask people to voluntarily state their name, where they live, and whether they're a water customer, but it's completely voluntary. Under the First Amendment, but I will pass along your request. You're welcome. All right, with that, uh, let's open to public comments on this exciting issue, connecting to Humboldt Bay. Who wants to go first? Patty? You win.
Yeah. Okay, questioner, I'm outside the city limits, but I am a city water customer. Um, I think that this is being taken up at a very good time, and I think we should do everything possible to. Go ahead to the study and cooperate in every way possible with the Trinidad Rancharia, which is a wonderful partner for the city and anything to. Welcome. People inside and outside of the city and the Rancharia work together and cooperate and share water. Um, I agree, Trevor, this water, water is sort of both. Right? It's a privilege, but it's a right and it. And it should be shared by everybody who wants to be on it, including West Haven if Oliver wants to. Get involved in having the greater, the real greater Trinidad area, so we're all together and even up to Bigwugu, why not?
Thank you.
Uh, Richard Johnson and I am not a Trinidad water customer. I have been totally confused with this because to me. We're asking the wrong question. Um, when we say that we want a feasibility study. I think we've already demonstrated that they're both options or even three or four options are feasible. That's not the issue. The issue has been, at least from my perspective. Lack of hard data, both financial and technical. Uh, that, uh, we as citizens and the community can look at and understand and actually. Make some trade analysis, whereas. Like, as I said, I I've been very confused and stay one because feasibility studies in mine lines already been done. With the effort that the city engineer and, uh, just people have shared. So she has already. So my suggestion is we we need to look at the facts, the hard data. The dollars and cents, the options, and then take a look at the trades because otherwise we're, I, in my opinion, we're spinning our wheels here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. And I I I try not to make editorial comments on public comments. But on this one, I I do feel like there's a definitional question. And call them feasibility studies, but what they include essentially is a comparative analysis. I mean, I think I think feasibility is probably the wrong word and. I I don't know, Joe, if you want to comment, but like feasibility.
Yeah, I prefer engineering study.
Engineering studies, financial comparative analysis, et cetera. So that's what we're really looking at. So it's a. We we need to come up with a better wording. Mr. West.
So in Trinidad. Years ago, I was kind of the center of attention for a while. Uh, so I got to know a lot of the local community for various reasons. Yeah, I think I studied last time. One of the things, I'm afraid, Richard, that one of the things we have problems with, we don't got real. Uh, I'm not, I never found out the amount of which was going to cost town, what they considered up. That is like something that has to be worked out. How much it's going to cost us, how much it's not, can't we get a. Grant, but uh, so that's a good thing to come up with. So I agree the study should do that here, but I just want to consider a couple of things. Um, this was the toughest thing I had to do when I was on the council. We spent a long time. Uh, I do want to compliment the Rancharia a little bit. You know, this process, they never ever talked to me. And so I know they could probably use that. So I really appreciate that. I got some maybe a sympathy. Of what our system is. Uh, the one thing that came up is, um. Decision is going to really quickly change Trinidad itself, and we all appreciate the, what this bill is just like. And and so we looked at this and said, bringing in water is could change. What Trinidad looks like. And we we saw that in that, but this, when we were doing this last time, we saw, we found out that people were. Ready to vitalize all across this area because they knew there would be a bigger ones. So. We we said, well, you know, we have set thick systems. We have other ways of controlling. Growth. So we looked at communities that have some types of similar things happening, including. Water, of course, some structure that they would change. And most of the time, it wasn't always true. It's a PC held out. Most of once they got either water or whatever they needed. Uh, the growth took place. And we talked about annexation. That's going to be growth. So if we want to have growth, I think this water supply would allow that. For those of us who think this is a unique community, I think it's really good to look at. Uh, what we have and what changes might take place. I have their great, first one thing. Humboldt Bay Water is a great company. They're going to be, they're going to provide you water, so that's not a problem. And Joe has said the cost is maybe prohibitive, so that's going to be another thing. And I'm totally with that. But remember that if we do, if we do want to, uh, get more water, we are making a step towards opening up the soon. The water supply we have now was very questionable. During the battle, we were very concerned. We really had to think about what we might do. And one of the things that came up is that over these years, we managed to get better people in here. We trained T two and T three people, though we had those people on board all the time. I think. In terms of keeping people here, I think we can do that. We suggested that we could expand our water system. That means annexation and that might open up areas along Patrick's Point Drive. And it could again change what this community looks like and feels like. This is a great place for people to come. This is a great place for us. So I would, I just would like you to look up and think about what could happen in Trinidad. One of the other things I heard is that, uh, places like West Haven, and I know their water supply is just great. Um, but if we look at Bigwugu, some of the areas north of us. Once we get a water supply, a secure water supply, I was told the state. Wants to say you have a good water supply. There are people north of you are here that are complaining. They don't have enough water. The state could come in according to my understanding. I'd like you to check on this. So state could come in and say you need to supply those people with water because you have the water. To supply them. At this point, we don't have that. So that's not a big question because our our supply is limited. But if we had a complete, a full supply of water, we have to supply other people out in the area with water and find ways to get water. So there may be other other things that came up, but I really would like you to think about. What that can be considered as to go through this process, which I think that's a. Thank you. Good luck with that.
Good feedback. Thank you. And guess on your experience. Thank you, John.
Uh, Mayor, remember the council on Dan Frost. And I I have to say that I'm stuck. Really a sense of unreality here. By focusing on the nuts and bolts of the system versus that system. What works best under that circumstance, the mechanics. Our system. I think the council is ignoring. It should be obvious, and that is the grossly. Inducing impacts. Of a pipeline. Supplied by the Humboldt Bay. No, the city council may not have land use control. Versus the surrounding area. But I would submit that it has the obligation. Not to in any way participate. In a project. That has enormous implications for the city. You've already heard plenty to suggest that there are lots of people in this area wanting more water. And more water means more growth. And more growth means a massive change to this unique and beautiful town. I think that what this council should be doing is first of all, recognizing. That we have a viable community. We have an adequate water supply, even in drought. It may not be perfect under every circumstance. But believe me. It beats a massive water project. That will be followed inevitably by massive growth in this area. Ten years after that water line comes in, if it does. You won't recognize this area anymore. You sure as hell won't recognize Trinidad. I would suggest that the city council. To do every, rather than join the end effort. To bring such a destructive project to this area. Do everything to fight it. I would not concede. That the Rancharia is necessarily going to bring in the pipeline. That isn't a given. You may surmise that. But it isn't a given. Please. For the good of this community. For its future and its present. Give this suggestion a big bad no. Thanks for.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Dylan Allen. I've lived in West Haven. I'm not a Trinidad water customer. Um, I am, however, concerned that this is like at least the third time this has come up, maybe the fourth time. In the forty-two years that I've lived in the area and. Every previous time that this has been looked at, uh, the decision was that. The cost of connecting to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. Would be exorbitant and would the only way Trinidad could afford to do that would be by expanding its customer base, which means going outside of the city. I heard earlier that, um, there was reference to the study done by Pacific Water Set Associates in twenty twenty-one. Their finding was that there's plenty of water in the Leffin Holt's Creek watershed in the aquifer to supply the city's needs and even expand. To supply all customers in the area. And I can't agree more with the the previous speaker, what he said, uh, he said very eloquently, better than I can say it. But I really feel like you need to consider the growth inducing impacts and. Sure, get your, you know, figure out what the cost is going to be and, you know, let's get real numbers for twenty twenty-five or twenty-seven or twenty-eight, what's going to be. But don't get so committed that you have, you know, you're forced down this road of. This is the only option, you know, is to connect to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. There is an intertie that's being connected between West Haven and Trinidad. That could supply emergency water, um, by your own staff report, when the Trinidad Rancharia, uh, connects to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. There's going to be a lot of extra water. So, I mean, there's a lot of other complications that have been discussed, you know, LAFCO expanding the what the city's service area. But, uh, you know, I think you, number one, you need to get the those costs because I I believe from previous studies. That, you know, if you're talking a hundred and twenty dollars a month now, it's going to be twice that much to connect to Humboldt Bay. Um, the other issue I wanted to bring up is right now, there's an issue. You have a area of special biological significance around Trinidad head. That caused the city to spend millions and millions of dollars rerouting storm drains and doing, you know, new set thick systems. We're not far from the point and, you know, all up and down from Moonstone to Trinidad, all the beaches are polluted. And we're not far from forcing, uh, or having state water or force us to also consider sewer systems. Um, and, you know, with more water and unrestricted supply. We're going to see that get works. We're going to see the the pollution in the groundwater and at the beaches get worse. And Trinidad will be forced, West Haven will be forced into having sewer systems. So instead of a hundred and twenty dollars or a hundred and thirty dollars a month. You're going to be looking at two hundred and fifty, three hundred a month. Thank you.
I live in West Haven, but I shop in Trinidad. You know, I said, Wednesday, you have the right of access to these maps. There's so many now. Those are delicious. And I wasn't going to speak, but don't happen. We can think of something. We look at costs based on all our systems. We are not examining the cost of environmental degradation. To bring those pipelines up here, there's going to be a lot of destruction of our environment just to bring up those pipes. So when you do your cost analysis, go outside of dollars and think about what is the environmental impact? What is it going to really cost us? And once you do that, you're going to see it's too expensive. And we also have global rise water. Like, I've been at West Haven, but like, uh, excuse me, Moonstone, I've been at Moonstone. I've seen that, um, what is it called? Hard enough, so. So when you think about them bringing in all that, where are they going to put it? How are they going to be sure that the Little River Bridge that they've talked about running that pipeline along is going to not be in the water in a few years? So you have to think long term, get beyond just the dollars and cents and look at the bigger picture. What is our environment? What is your environment worth to you? And it's priceless. So that's what you should be putting your mind in your dollars and your cents.
Thank you.
Okay, again, I'm Jeff there and I'm losing. Uh, I don't, as I said in my email to the council, uh, over the weekend, I don't think we need to do a study to bring something here that we already all know we don't want. Um, we don't want additional wire here. It's going to create all kinds of problems with development. And it'll be very expensive. So I think there's two two sets of costs, one is to finance the dollars and cents. There's also the cost to the livability and, uh, of being in this area that we're all love so much. So let's keep that in mind. Again, I don't think we do a study. There is something here that we already know we don't want, more water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your counsel, and thanks everybody for coming tonight. I mean, maybe the low soldier, but I'm in favor of these stories. I've been Trinidad. Concerns me the most right now about Trinidad's water system. Yeah. An operator is employed by a city that can run by himself. With the last three. Control engine. Up with eight hundred thousand. See, can't continue. You're a lot of. About growth. Yeah, well, here it is. See a lot of. Folks that move. That are still training that, so I definitely respect you. Counsel, you need to represent. Citizens to the. City of Trinidad. Great players in the city of Trinidad. It's not your responsibility, and I put this in my, uh, comment, not your responsibility. Planning decisions. County North of Little River, not your responsibility. Water. Decisions. Don't count on the north. Your responsibility. Train level. You know, the feasibility study and find out how much it costs. It was. I don't know. For you, good feasibility study. There was a comment in here this evening, and Jack, I think, made this comment about. Well, once the Rancharia gets water, it will be at the time. I'm not with you, Jack, right now. Jack, you're not going to want to see Trinidad one. That's nuts. I don't think that's going to happen without the city of Trinidad. Anyway, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask everyone to please hold applause for, you know, comments you like.
I don't think there were applause.
I didn't mean hold. So there was a pause already.
Nina Thompson. Trinidad Water Customer. First of all, I want to thank you for reading my public comment, written public comments. So I'd definitely just take an excerpt from it since it was so long. Thank you, City Council, for following through on the October twenty twenty-one City Council luncheon, which passing ends. And bringing this back. Also, in twenty twenty-one, the City Council voted to investigate if there were alternative water sources for the Leffinholz Creek. Pacific Watershed Associates, PWA, proposed the development of water storage ponds above the city to supplement water supply by our creek. The study cost the city ten thousand dollars and this project was determined to be unsuccessful. No action plan was implemented from this study. Therefore, Trinidad's water supply remains solely dependent on the shallow creek whose flow decreases during times of drought. As the statewide drought worsened, Leffinholz Creek developed seriously diminished water levels. During the twenty twenty-one drought, City Council activated its emergency drought response plan requiring Trinidad's water customers to conserve water use and make water customers break. Beyond water scarcity, water quality and fire safety issues, it's now clear that the city of Trinidad can no longer afford to operate its municipal water plant. For the past three years, state licensed consultants have been required to operate the city's municipal water plant. Due to very high consultant fees, the city's accumulated water funds, which were more than a million dollars, are now depleted in a deficit. Starting in early twenty twenty-two, the city of Trinidad contracted with Coleman Engineering as a consultant certified by an operator, CPO. This spring Coleman was replaced by a consultant that is charging the city less, less as acting CPO. And again, thank you, City Manager, for that finding of person. It is unfortunate that Coleman Engineering's three-year total charges to the city of Trinidad to operate our small water plant was eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and seventy-eight cents, which averages a little over twenty-four thousand dollars a month the city paid to Coleman for three years. But we have our in-house people too. These consulting charges have resulted in a water fund deficit and the city's water customers rates have significantly increased and will continually increase yearly due to the high costs of managing the city's municipal water plant and absorbing Coleman's engineering's high consultant fees. Please move forward with the feasibility study and ultimately connect to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District so that Trinidad can be a water-resilient city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Higginson?
All right. Good evening, Council and neighbors, residents, publicans here. I want to backstop the comments that were just made by Dick Bruce and Anita and all the city manager and the mayor of the county. This presentation, I'll start by saying I'm in favor of a study. We're just asking to get information. I don't know why there's so much opposition to gaining facts. That the society would be struggling for factual information right now. We're trying to make decisions on the viability of our city being able to continue to operate a water tree in a meaningful fashion without all the facts. The city has invested significant amount of money, grant funders and otherwise, in developing studies. You know, I know that because when I came to this town, I was concerned about our water resilience and what our watershed our watershed can support. Do you know why I'm a little concerned about that? Because I've read the studies that the city paid for. Studies provide facts, facts and informed decisions. Please form a decision with facts. Touching on a few other things with regards to growth, I agree with Dick that the city has an excellent setup. Also, the planning commission to control growth of the city makes. Does that excuse us of the obligation to our neighbors? Not necessarily, but it doesn't mean that that obligation supersedes your obligation to the constituents that put you in office. And I voted for every single person sitting here. Whether or not it was a choice on the ballot, it's still important to me to affirm your presence in the city of your town. From a firefighting standpoint, many of you know, I've spent over thirty years both in volunteer and paid service. The city, I believe, has adequate short-term fire protection, heat, fire protection water, the ability to put out a house fire, shelter fire, those types of things. The issues that have been in Southern California, other places, the concerns about having enough water for the cataclysmic fire are red herring. Be grateful in that circumstance for personnel and equipment to do something with that water. We're never going to have it up here. That's the reality. So stop using water and firefighting as a scary tactic. It's, it's short sighted. The money was talked about. We can't afford another trip around Marigold Row and spend another eight thousand dollars and take, if we're able to get our reserves back up, not to one point seven million, but four thousand, we can't do that again. You are making generational decisions right now that will impact the viability of this community, the city of Trinidad going forward. We are shrinking. We are struggling to fill seats on our council, on our planning commission. We've got to be responsive, get data and make responsible decisions. Thank you.
You get one round. And now no more. All right. Other public comments?
I have comments. Everybody else can go first. I can go last.
Hi, Patrick Donalds. My concern is the marine ecology and all the seeps going up on the buffs from Moonstones up to Patrick's Point. The septic, thanks, congratulations on water, sanitation, storm drains, all that. It could be any regress, you know, like you may not even be caught up there. I have no idea about that infrastructure. But what I see is the marine biologist is that there's pollution. It's like serious chemical seepage into the public beaches. Dogs drink that water. They die from the salmon. Hurricane dogs die here from salmon poisoning and also water. So, I mean, the leash law is great, but you guys are killing dogs and killing the fish, killing our beloved sanctuary around the head, bringing back marine resilience. Little, you know, clams, seaweed or anything, you know? Get us on the map for, you know, be proactive. And I don't see a whole bunch of people that aren't, you know, our hearts in this. And future generations, so I don't want to use scare tactic, but it's been happening. It's giant things out there and a water, a public or municipal water input with demand, some more sanitary wastewater treatment. And that's total hand in hand with the eight hundred thousand dollars spent at the water treatment facility. You know, it's like we all, this has been going on for, for decades with the United Nations, the world's biggest thing protecting our fresh water. There's less than one percent fresh water on the planet. And, and it's getting compromised by wastewater through the air, plastics in the air, a lot of fire retardation, a lot of people already living in the community. So there's a benefit. You know, get outside water and build whatever you want, have people pool as much as they want. You know, it's not going to be drinking. People aren't going to be consuming their own waste. You all need to deal with that. Had to come in is a probably a leader, you know, they can show a green resource septic system, you know, and they already are building alternative housing, you know, doing so much. And I hate to rely on that, but we're all community. You know, further down on this and now saving a lot of water.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Andrew O. online, so and another individual. So somebody I'll go next and then I'll have Andrew and then we'll just continue on.
I think much of the analysis is in the back of the mission of this. Cost to pay water of municipal water just in a charming amount of water. It's clearly down, less expensive. Then the water cost the existing system, which will be done for years into the future. We could set what has been somewhat, somewhat has been just over, yeah. Some of it was discussed by the council this evening. Also, if you look at the history of water that's that Humboldt Bay has been surrounding. It's called all the Mississippi surrounding the Mississippi Pallo Gates. And everyone is paying less for water and has been paying less for water for sixteen years. And when it has approached what we've been paying last year, it's gone up a lot since last year. It included septic. Humboldt Bay has provided exceptionally at all costs to provide the best in this water. There has been a lot of discussion about the advantages are seriously considered. One of them is fire safety. All of the areas surrounding the city of Trinidad according to the path fire, the fire's latest assessment of fire. All of the area is considered maarette risk. Fire, except for the head. Trinidad Head, which is considered very high risk. That means the town of Trinidad is surrounded by either maarette risk or high risk fire. There is no question that having pipe from Humboldt Bay is more capable of supplying more water in emergency. It was from the day that it was fired.
Can finish your sentence.
Maybe a finisher.
I want to talk about that fire again.
Yeah, so we can talk about that a little bit. Paul and I discussed the fire from November twenty twenty-four. And we were just talking, calculating how much water was used in that fire and it threw down one part of tanks, twenty-five percent. This is a structure fire up on North Patrick's Point Drive. About thirty-five thousand gallons. Just like that structure fire over, you know.
Thirty-five thousand. Okay, thank you for that. Other public comments? Paul and then, I don't know, Andrew, you have your hand up. Would you, do you want to speak? Because I'll call on you next. Let's go ahead, Paul, a little.
So first of the fire, I think our friend in the audience spoke about in these conflagrations that we've seen, like the Palisades and Chico with Paradise Old Chastity, no amount of municipal fire supply is going to be had. Daffing of fire resources in Humboldt. Was the fire chief in West Haven for eight years. I was on the fire department for over dozen years. I worked for fire for four years. I worked at the public works for five and a half years operating cities treatment plant and distribution system. And I've been the general manager at West Haven for seven years. And so we have adequate capacity. Your average structure fire is thirty to forty thousand gallons. I know that from many fires working with these systems. And so yeah, if you're down the tank twenty-five percent, if we're down a tank, city is down a tank. Would deplete your system by twelve percent, twelve and a half percent. And ironically, the intertie, emergency intertie is designed to supply about that pound of water. For just those kind of situations. The septic issue, the growth inducing, there's, if there is, and whether there's massive subdivision or not, if you have adequate water, you can't say no to A P U S. So then maybe that doesn't mean anything in the city of Trinidad because there's a limited footprint for septic systems. But those people live in front of Leffinholz to your city limits in your water system and, and those people who are outside, the mind conversations with the division of empty water. And I'm here as a private person, okay? It's the it's their feeling. If you had adequate water, they would ask you to extend your lines to seep. To serve those unserved properties between, you know, underserved. People have inadequate water because of the people who make water act. It's passed four or five years ago. You would have to build infrastructure to serve those properties north of town. As far as Seaport on Six Coach and Patrick's Point. That's about six miles. Our most recent infrastructure project in West Haven was about a million and a half dollars with engineering and construction. So there's some real costs that might be borne by the city in the long term. And you still have to operate a distribution system and you still need certified operators, whether or not you're just buying this water. And you can't leapfrog past other districts. You have to buy water from McKinleyville. You're not just Humboldt Bay's customer. There's rules with that. So it's not as simple as it's being painted by maybe your city manager and other folks. Well, I have to consider. So
Thank you. I'll check with Andrew, but I have Andrew Orhaski. Did you want to speak?
Yeah, that's why my hands up.
All right, why don't you go ahead and Andrew, and then we have someone at the podium. I'm sorry, you've had your hand up. We were just not sure.
Yeah, that's why the hands up. It's to speak.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity to comment. Andrew Orhaski, Trinidad resident. Wow, as much things have changed, they stay the same. I recommend that everyone pick up a copy of Cadillac Desert. It's a, it's an old book now, but I'll tell you what, if you haven't read it, you need to after listening to this discussion and seeing this come back around and around again. Yeah, so I sent a written comment in and I'm just going to reiterate those points. You have a problem with leaky septic going into the ocean. The area around Trinidad is, has a special, special designation. The water board will yeah, the water, water board will, will do what it does. So if you add more water to those leaky septics, you're going to have more pollution. Second point really had to do you know, more with like growth and growth inducing impacts. Yes, you only have jurisdiction over the city of Trinidad. However, your actions in joining this pursuit of a pipeline reverberate out into the community and it will induce growth. And then on that final point, you're really gonna wanna have a more thorough discussion and perhaps a training on, on SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. I've seen some decisions by the city in the past that, you know, I'm not sure. May, maybe it's just not getting the greatest advice, who knows? But I really suggest getting a training or, or just studying up on some basics with, with SEQA. Of course, the action tonight may or may not require, you know, that analysis at some level. But I can guarantee you the Humboldt Bay municipal water district, if they're not already, they're going to be scared of the sequel they're gonna have to go through for this. So Trinidad, you don't really wanna be a part of that. I hope you vote against this and kill the pipeline for good. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Sorry to keep you waiting. And now we'll reset the timer and please, thank you for your patience.
Sure. I'm scared to talk in here. All the ideas I have prior to change. I'm David Hankin, I'm a professor at West Haven. I taught at Humboldt for about thirty five years. I had an office to rent out for about thirty five years. I lived in nine, five, seven, seven, zero, zip code and I pay taxes to the Trinidad, city of Trinidad all the time. So do most people that sit there. And one thing, just inside, I really learned, I think the feeling that what you're doing, you know, you only have the thing in Trinidad. So I like to think that community industry, especially that I'm saying. I've shared on the water board of West Haven for thirty five plus years. And one thing I'd like to tell you is that it's expensive to operate a small water system. Here is it right now. What I've heard tonight is somehow getting water from Humboldt Bay will change that. I can assure you with, you have your distribution system to take care of. You have six leaks. You have to have ways to pump water to people's houses. You have to build them, na 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 na. In other words, there's a minimal staffing level that you have to have. The only thing that Humboldt Bay water might possibly change is the level of the operator that you're required to have. If you decide you're never gonna touch enough water again and you rely totally on Humboldt Bay water, then I suspect you might go lower the whole treatment operator. But if you decide that, even you're allowed to like supplement your water with Humboldt Bay, then I think you're stuck in the same sector you're in now. You need to have another three operator. Excuse me. The second thing here is I've lived around here a long time. For a long time Trinidad had a viable, effectively operating water treatment system with a level three operator. What happened? Right now, you can say that it's, oh, we can't do that. Well, somehow it happened before. I can't see any reason why it can't happen again. And I think there was a, from my perspective, something didn't happen here that other remedy the problem more quickly, right? So I think that's unfortunate, but I don't think that there's any long-term reason that you can't have a viable local, locally operated system. And the final thing that I wanted to say is that, you know, what I'm personally, you know, most concerned about is the potential of growth. And if you do go have a feasibility study like this, somehow you need to find funding for a few some study of potential growth impacts of this part, right? Everyone's talking about that, but we need to sit down and absolutely throw some money at somebody to study. And if you're going to go ahead and.
Thank you very much. Since Paul Lozenblatt got the times to progress, since Paul Lozenblatt. Oh, well, no, I'm sorry. And I didn't catch that, but Paul is a West Haven Water District lead. So I guess I'm considering him as a subject matter expert. You're right. So I think we're done there. And but yeah, and I have to, everybody gets one of them. Sorry, please.
Thank you. I'm Pat Perry. I live over on Edward Street, so I'm a Trinidad water user. I think the problem that I have, the resistance I'm there into feasibility study is that there's a perception that it is biased toward duty. And then if we enter into this study, we will just in fact be going down that pathway because it's not, it's not just the facts. It's the feasibility of the pipeline. And so there's not, it's not like we're just researching facts and trying to get information. We're trying to find out about that particular thing. And so that's my resistance. I'm afraid if we start this, just gonna go right down the stream with it. I feel like what we value here, we talk about growth, we talk about how we don't want it, we talk about the beauty of this town. I think what people value here is our ability to appreciate this place that we live in and to live lightly on the land. And one of the things that means is living in a perimeter, so the land that we live on. Hey, having been in California in all my life, you know what happens in California. Water goes from one place where it is, one place where it isn't. And you get a disaster almost every time. You get growth, you get you get people that are in there to make money with developments. I just feel like we need to step back and stay Trinidad and stay in the robotic system and stay within the system. So that's my, thanks.
Thank you.
Not everybody of you people know. Like I do. At one time, my ancestors owned Trinidad. I'm here sitting listening to you guys making decisions for the people that don't even recognize you. And that is worth saying. Now I have nothing against Rantcheria. But since I moved into Trinidad, there's nothing but trouble. Every night, I live on a city drive of life and death. Every night, you hear police cars going over to the bingo. And they go, put it in a drink. That is what I'm against. And we're here for water. I knew all your people are for water for that rancher area. None of you kids are Rantcheria. It's a riffra, a lot into Trinidad. Lot of drugs. We never had that before. An old home beach. That beach was perfect because it was hard beach. Now you go down there, you find drug needles, all this terrible things happen to you. I just wish we could all get along and stop this bad time. First, I understand because Rantcheria turned them up. I say they're not too good to deal with that. That's my case.
Thank you very much.
If I'm just piece of my separate, I did I get to a mile outside of Trinidad, but I am a Trinidad water user with how I have business here in Trinidad. I've been here for four years. Within Trinidad, and I have always felt that I was a community member. You know, I don't live in Trinidad. I felt I was part, I had felt I was part of the, the extended community of Trinidad. And I guess for me, it's hard to hear about you as the council having decision-making ability to affect us. And my hope would be that you really would consider what many people have said here. I'm impressed by the expertise and information and knowledge that many have spoken here tonight. And I just hope that you know, what is community? I mean, you know, we've got the earth as our community. We've got the oceans as our community. And to separate it out and to say, this is who needs to take the decisions and what we need to consider. I would just hope that there would be that openness really here and into a lot of what people have asked. So thank you for listening. Thank you for listening.
Wow, thank you. Other comments?
Evening, everyone. My name's Jackie Posner-Carmson. I'm the CEO for Trinidad Rancheria. I've been at Trinidad Rancheria for eighteen years and I'm very, very proud of working for Trinidad Rancheria. On behalf of Garth Sundberg, tribal chairman, vice chairman, Robert Hemstead and rest of the council. We are very happy to work with the city council, with this group of people. It's really been a pleasure. And especially with the city manager, I'm very disappointed to hear that you're gonna leave us so soon. Trevor gave, it's really been a very positive experience for me over all these years working with staff. You know, I take exception to words that say that Trinidad Rancheria has brought Trump. Trinidad Rancheria has done nothing in eighteen years, but good things for this city. We cleaned up everything at the harbor that we can. We're here leaching into the ASVS. The seeping septics, there's a wastewater treatment plant, there's public restrooms that we pay over seventy to eighty thousand dollars a year. We have done recently the coordinated stormwater project. The city did the dirt parking lot in your area. We've just done the stormwater project in the Cape area. We're about ready to build an interpretive center. So everything down there is about mitigation, everything. We've, we've overcome all of the citations from the state water report. When we bought the property, there were five citations from the previous owner. So we stand very proud of that one and putting it into trust. We also have a marine program. We're monitoring the bay. We're looking at what is creating the issues with the calab, the purple urgent. We're looking at water quality monitoring. The mayor brought up tonight a collaboration we've met with staff and, and the mayor and the city manager over concerns with the seeps from the homes in Trinidad on top of the bluff that are leaching down onto the beach. So the rancher is committed to cleaning up these seeps. We're doing that for the tribal lands. We're working to put everything on the wastewater treatment plant that we can. So the rancher is doing only the very best and very good things. I would request an additional minute or two. Regarding the feasibility study that we have.
I'm sorry, I hear comments. I'm giving her an extra minute or two because she's the CEO of the Rancheria and there have been a lot of questions and comments. And so I, I'm not trying to put him fair, but I, I do think that you wanna be able to hear answers to your questions, but I could be wrong, but.
You're not talking about water, you're just talking about the rancher area.
And the thing is, is why does she?
Come on, you guys, you gotta respect the decision of the chair. Just give her more time.
Goodbye, Becky.
I'll wrap up, but in closing, the city does have to decide if you want to embark on a study and what, what is important to the city to study. The rancher is feasibility was an alternatives analysis. We know we're moving forward with the pipeline. We don't have to study that. We know we're doing that. So that study will be a public document in the near future. And the city and the greater community can decide how to proceed. I respect everyone's opinion. The tribe respects everyone's opinion. Everybody has a right to their opinion as long as they're expressing it in respectful way. So we're here to partner if you want to partner. I think Humboldt Bay is the one that's gonna want a decision from the city. But the rancher is moving forward very rapidly. We intend to move this into construction within the next two years. So thank you so much for the extra. I'm happy to answer the question.
Excuse me, Jackie, did you say, Jackie, excuse me, did you say within the next two years?
We would like to move into construction within the next two years. So that's, we'll, we'll be going through the SEQA process. We'll be doing finalizing, designing, engineering, you know, from the SEQA process. So it could be longer, but we would like to get through the permitting process by twenty twenty seven.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I want Supervisor Madron is going to come to the podium, I believe, and then I would like to give, I don't know if there are any questions we have for Humboldt Bay municipal water district, but I would recognize that they're here. If you guys have questions.
Supervisor Madron. I think it was very important for you to give more time. I will say, I think the rancher has absolutely done a lot of great things for our community, working together, partnership. I very much love their original plan for their hotel, which was this two-story West Haven Hotel. They actually fit in with the existing waters, obviously. But that's another matter I'm saying, and I hear the pop of the bell tonight. I'm a forty-year Lufenholz resident. I'm a hydrologist. I did my thesis on milk and Lufenholz Creek. And I noted wonderful reports all filed today for this agenda, but none of my stuff was there whatsoever. And I've submitted multiple reports to you over the years, but I think because I didn't charge you a hundred to two hundred dollars an hour, they just didn't get that recognition.
Add it in. Add it in.
At any rate, I put a lot of information together over the years, provided probably tens of thousands of dollars for free consulting with advice to the city protectives. I want to congratulate you on the work you did when you decided, no matter what our water sources, whether it's the pipeline or Lufenholz, you need to add more tank storage, or at least fix the old tanks, you need to fix leaky pipes, do an air tie with West Haven. Those are bold moves and I applaud you for that effort. It's a great effort with West Haven and, and really shows our partnership. Jimmy Lynn knew that the city of Trinidad was much bigger than the city of Memphis. He was mayor for a number of years and he really, he was the one who helped get the watershed council started and really got us working together as a community, which some people spoke to here tonight. So I want to congratulate you on the work that you've done and there's more to do. Resiliency is huge. It's a very important thing. And ponds are feasible. Where they're feasible is above culverts in these headwater streams, like on my property in Upper Lufenholz. And I'm actually working on two ponds on my property that are clay lined and they will slowly leak through the summer, adding to the base flow of Lufenholz Creek. So if you put in forty or fifty of those, like we've been doing in the Matola Watership for the last twenty years, you can actually bring the CFS in the creek up over the summertime. Also, thinning forests, I talked about that earlier tonight. When you get these really dense forests, not only are they a huge fire danger, requiring water to deal with, and you're never gonna put them out, they're consignment forests. But going through and thinning those forests, living them up and thinning them out, not dirt cutting, can actually bring water tables back up as well. That's a long-term process. I'm doing five acres on my land over the next two years and I'm gonna do field trips up there to show people how to do that. There's money out there to help people do it. Urgencies are critical, you know, even during the drought, we never ran out of water. Lufenholz has never gone dry, never gone dry in recorded history, okay? It gets low in the summertime, but in the record in twenty twenty one, which in PWO report, you have a graph of the water flow that summer. And in August, three times, half the flow of the creek disappeared from illegal cannabis surrogates. I identified those. I worked with code enforcement. We eliminated those diversional lawsuits. And that has not happened since. I'm sorry, could I have just a? I'm sorry, could I have just a couple more minutes than that, Mayor?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Proten as well. You know, pipes infrastructure is a great thing, but even if you have the pipeline from Humble Bay, earthquakes, pipes break. So it is not necessarily resilience here or reliability. We get earthquakes, we know this, okay? Big ones are coming. And so when you have distributed storage, which I've been talking about for years here, where everybody puts in as many people as can, say, say five hundred homes out of two thousand in our area, put in a five thousand gallon storage tank, ten foot by ten foot area in the yard. And five hundred people do that, that's two and a half million gallons of water storage right at the home where it's needed to fight a structured fire with a three inch nozzle on it for the department to hook into. So distributed storage is absolutely a piece of the puzzle. It's not the one all be all, none of it is, but all these things add like fixing gippy pipes and building ponds and doing forest thinning, things like that. The PWA study showed that the aquifer, the sand terraces in Upper Lufenholz Watership hold approximately one third of the storage of Ruth Lake. Think about though, a third of the storage in Ruth Lake is stored up there in the sand terrace. And that's why it never dries up. The creek runs year round because it's got this aquifer that needs it slowly during the summer. It has been said here tonight, what a few times, growth is what you really ought to be thinking about. And you're bigger than the city of Memphis. I'm a tax payer, Trinidad, like many people are, even if you don't live in the city. And it is absolutely true. Yes, there are land use controls, but recently they stayed passing laws that make it ministerial now. No public hearing, no permit required, no living building permit to add a second dwelling or an ADU. And that may not happen in the city, but it will happen throughout West Haven, throughout North Trinidad, and et cetera. So growth is a huge deal, and it will change the face of this community. If you end up deciding to get into this pipeline or support it anyway. And when you think rates might be cheaper with Humble Bay, McKinneyville has maybe fifty dollars a month, sixty dollars a month for a trip. One of the lowest in that comparison state down on the cities, water rates. But you got to add to that the cost of wheeling through McKinneyville, the cost to pump it up the hill to Moonstone, Trinidad, the cost to then construct the new line, the cost to operate, maintain the new line. Plus, you've got to continue to maintain your your water storage, your distribution system. So it's likely it will be is the same, if not more, than your current rates are. Lastly, it hasn't been mentioned at all. There's a lot of assumptions that this pipeline is a done deal, but it's going to have to go through Latko. When you start extending pipelines, and you're a member of Latko for the city, when you start extending pipelines outside of the district's boundary, I think you realize this recently with Mill Creek, and that is you have to look at annexation. Now, maybe we can't annex a sovereign nation, but Trinidad would absolutely need to be annexed to the water district. We have these two competing mandates, Latko. One is consolidate small systems. The other one is to avoid urban sprawl and avoid islanding. If you were to try and extend that pipeline up to Trinidad, you then create an island of annexation. Because West Haven said no. The areas in between, Moonstone, et cetera, have not said yes or no. So you create an island, we don't approve those at Latko. That's a really difficult thing. So there's been no decision that this pipeline is a done deal. It has to go through Latko. It has to get approval there. And I'm only one member of Latko, but I can tell you that I know our current membership is very concerned about this issue. And we asked for additional information from the water district. They agreed to provide it and have not provided it in regards to growth enhancement and in regards to water rates.
Can you wrap up in that?
Yes, lastly.
Beth here.
The the reason you spent nine hundred thousand dollars is because you had a tier three operator, Ryan. But according to Ryan, first hand, he was forced out. He didn't get the support he needed to be your water treatment plant manager. So he left and he resigned. That's why you spent almost a million dollars or more on doing the things you did. There were bad decisions that were made. You didn't support your staff. Don't make a bad decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Supervisor Madron got to two or six minutes. I apologize, but that's just the way I thought we should go. Okay, I don't see any other public comments, so I'm going to bring this back to the council. And I guess I would ask you, I guess, two questions. We can have our discussion and or we can take a short break. First, what what's your plug? Okay. I don't see anybody saying, yeah, don't roll, so. All right, any questions or comments from the council?
So many of us, Humble Bay here tonight.
Yes.
Can I try a couple of questions with him or her?
Yes. Thank you for sticking with us, by the way. That's been a long discussion.
Council, Mayor, my name is Mitch Kepas, and I'm the recently appointed general manager for Humble Baby and this is what I just think. We've been working with Rancheria to look at the feasibility of extending our pipeline north to serve the Rancheria, as has been requested. And as discussed here this evening, to move forward with that, you'd be looking at the CEQA documentation as well as the Latko application process, as well as working with the county and the state coastal commission. So there's going to be many steps in the process before we move forward with the north mainline extension. As has been discussed here this evening, it would require going through the McKinleyville Community Services District Distribution System. There would be some water we would associate with that. And there would be some infrastructure required to pump the water up to the Trinidad Grand Chorea and the city of Trinidad, if you so chose. So the first step, and I think all that's being discussed this evening is, does the city of Trinidad want to move forward with the feasibility or engineering analysis, comparative analysis to determine whether or not they want to participate in the north mainline extension? It is, as Jackie said, a decision that needs to be made sooner than later because it will affect our, for example, Latko application, whether or not we're just looking for an amendment for our CER influence or an annexation. So some of these things need to be decided very soon in order for us to move forward. I know it's been raised, well, why can't we do an emergency intertie? And frankly, because we may not have that water available, dependent on how the system is sized and also it's going to be an investment made by the Trinidad Rancheria. So those are all in the future. I don't know that we have those answers today, but certainly by going through this process together, some of these questions that you have would hopefully be answered. I would like to address Supervisor Madron's comment that when Humble Baby Municipal Water District went through a recent municipal service review, that we were requested to provide information about this project. And in fact, he did raise it as a concern. However, the Latko board made it clear that that is not what the N S R process was for because we did not have a project yet on the table that is fine because we're still going through the feasibility analysis. And we have quite a bit of environmental documentation to go through. And it was agreed that if, when this project moves forward, we will come back to amend our N S R if this project is approved. So just to be clear, so there's no misunderstanding and that you all have facts. Now, I know you said you have some questions. I don't know if you have any additional questions.
I do indeed. Thank you for your question. For us, it's not really a feasibility question, and that's been touched on. We know it can be done. It's not that hard. It's physics and engineering and so forth. How much would you charge us per gallon of water to send it up?
So that's a great question, and it's a question that I can answer today. And it's not how we have our fees structured because we have a very complete system. We have municipal wholesale customers. We have only about two hundred retail customers. We don't charge our wholesale customers by the gallon. We have our costs and we distribute it to our wholesale customers based on our total cost and the share that they use per our ordinance sixteen. It's a little complicated, not something I'm accustomed to working with, but I'm getting up to speak. But we don't charge our municipal customers by the gallon. And I don't know yet because I don't know the cost of the pipeline. I don't know the cost of the pumping. Those are all things that would be fleshed out in an engineering analysis.
How much does McKinleyville Community Services, this recharge, wheel the water through their system?
Well, that's, again, that would be part of the engineering analysis. I don't have those answers at this point. Until there are agreements in place to move forward to different stages, those negotiations can't really occur. So I can't answer those questions tonight.
Well, I appreciate your comments, anyhow, thank you.
Are there any other questions this evening? Very much.
It's very much.
Yeah. When we're speaking about the feasibility study, it would be done by Humble Bay?
No, I think I would have a third party would do it. So so we would want it to be completely independent. And and I just want to, I just feasibility is kind of a funny word. So because I think you want to say, well, of course, it's feasible, right? Anything's practically feasible, right? But but the components of the feasibility study generally include technical feasibility, environmental feasibility, financial feasibility, legal and regulatory compliance, schedules, operational stuff, et cetera. So I I think we're what the council has struggled with in the past and is struggling with now is being feared that the decision that we should be potentially making is just, we want to find out once and for all how much it would cost, what would be involved, how long would it take? Is it a better solution than what we have? And maybe it's not. And so I just, from my perspective, this is probably, we talked about it in twenty twenty one. We're talking about it again today. We talked about twenty fifteen. In twenty thirteen, the council voted to do it, by the way. And so I, you know, my personal feeling is that we need to need to understand what the potential growth impacts are from a fact based decision model. And so as everyone is telling us, we're fearful, we're concerned that this is going to happen, or we're concerned that, you know, it's going to cost more. I mean, there have been a lot of statements tonight, and I don't feel like I have the data to back up what I'm saying or what anybody in this room is saying. So I'm going to just stop right there, but if anybody wants to take this a different direction, I think Bryce, you had a presentation you might want to do.
I do indeed, a very powerful presentation.
All right, so Bryce has a presentation that he wanted to do. I think we should do that and.
Now, before I have to make.
We don't know how much it costs because we haven't given direction to staff to go find out. Like, that's the other.
And is the feasibility study just solely about this pipeline? Or is it a larger feasibility study on branch, water, goals, and issues?
I think that's up to us to define. I think I think right now, in the past, and and what we've discussed so far tonight, I mean, I think Joe's presentation was the outlawing of a feasibility study, and he tried to pull it in. But that's, you know, I think we need to scope it.
Do we have any like estimate, estimate on how much it might cost? Or that would be something that we're going to bring back to the council at a future date?
I mean, it was fifteen thousand was almost going to cost like in twenty twenty one. But I think now it's going to be more than that because I I, yeah, I don't even have a guess.
Whatever it is, we are reasonably comfortable saying we can get ready. But it's going to be well worth of a hundred thousand. I would say two hundred thousand would be comfortable.
Now, just address the pipeline.
That would address the question then as well.
Well, wait, so so what we would be doing is we'd be assessing. So so here's what I would. I mean, I think what I would propose is that, you know, we'd be people revisiting this issue because we don't have the information. And so we would scope a feasibility plan that included parameters that I just mentioned. So it'd be the technical, the financial, the legal and regulatory, operational, environmental, and someone mentioned.
Growth inducing?
Growth inducing, right, yes. Like, what's really, what would really be the impact? And I'd like to compare the two systems. Trinidad came to its own, this is what it's going to cost, and this is what will follow. And if Trinidad, you know, decided to hook up to Humble Bay, you know, this is, this is the real impact, and we get a third party to do the research. That's what I'm proposing. And so that that is my motion. But I, Bryce wants to do a presentation first, I believe, so I'm going to hold that. I'm going to hold that.
Each of you has a packet in front of you that you can follow along if you prefer not to look at the screen. So I was recently driving near the Mad River, and I noticed how low it looked. And I got to thinking, you know, well, how much water is being taken out of there? How are they doing that with the rivers, you know, so so small looking? So I found out that it serves every day over eighty eight thousand customers, some which are commercial, two hundred are commercial users. And they're providing water through their own operating systems. And they buy this water wholesale, like Trinidad would if we sign on to the project. And I noticed when you looked at the intake on the Mad River, as you can see, it's out of the water at this time of year. It's not even down in the river. But the reason it can still get enough water to satisfy that many people is it takes the water from way down below the riverbed, sixty to ninety foot down. So no matter how, how Riot looks up on top, the water's always flowing down there underneath the gravel. Next slide, please. And that's the same for our little Luffenholtz Creek here. You can see this picture from twenty twenty one, taken September ninth, where it was point five nine nine cubic feet a second. Looks, looks like there's almost no water at all. And yet it was supplied in the city. And we never even once had to implement any of the emergency restrictions that we had to adopt. Had to adopt chapter thirteen point zero eight of our municipal code. Next slide. And that includes five stages of water shortage that we go through. And I I eliminated the details for each one because it's like pages and pages of text. But for stage one, there's four use restrictions. Stage two, we have eight restrictions. Stage three, sixteen use restrictions. Four, it goes back down to fourteen. And five, it goes to thirteen. And that's because they they those adopt the ones from the previous. So there's actually more restrictions total, but they it's broken down, only thirteen. But yet, between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty three, you didn't get a single notice from the city, emergency. Right, you can't, you know, do this or that. About one in twenty twenty four, it's been talked about because of the broken pipe. And that's it. And that's true, even though, as Supervisor Madron pointed out, at that time, people were illegally taking a lot of water cannabis farms out of the creek in the middle of the night. I found some minutes from twenty twenty one where Mayor Ladwig points out that there's this mysterious drops in the creek going down overnight. Can't figure out. But all that's been taken care of, the market crash has eliminated that problem. So now we have the water that we're entitled to. So you can't just look at a stream that's seasonally low and assume that it can't produce the water that you need. Next slide, please. This is the same, what, so the PWA strategy to store water outside of the the creek during the high flow periods is the same strategy that the state of California is working on right now. That picture of that blue lake there on the left, that's from the all farmland in the coastal range valley. Water is going to be pumped from the Sacramento River during the high flow periods over to that area and create a new reservoir called the Sitges Reservoir, S I T E S. over to that area and create a new reservoir called the SITES reservoir, S I T E S. You can read all about it on the internet. Next slide. It talks about where it would be seventy miles northwest of Sacramento. Water would be pumped, just like it would be pumped out of Luffenholz Creek, if we can follow through on that. And these atmospheric rivers that come through are the time when you can move a tremendous amount of water from that otherwise would flow down down the rivers and the creeks. You could put that and store it for later use during summer. And we should be pursuing the same strategy. We started out on that road and somebody dropped the ball and it never it never got to move forward like it could have and should have. And this map shows the sphere of influence, brown Trinidad and a light yellow. If we bring water up here, it will make it easier to subdivide and build those lots outside the city in the sphere and other parts outside the city. And as we heard tonight, that's something most people are very concerned about because we like the quaint rural character of our area. Next slide, please. And the pipeline would also be the key to the the rancheria being able to build the five and a half story hotel that it wants to build on the shore of Trinidad Bay. Many people believe that that's overtly designed, it's too big, does not fit in with the character of this area. So why would we want to facilitate the the construction of a hotel like that? Next slide, please. And this study from SHN engineers from twenty seventeen, a master plan for development, shows not only that a hotel would be built, a hundred rooms, the casino would be increased three times to a hundred and fifty square feet. Twenty five thousand square feet of office space, a gas station with six pumps. This, if we facilitate, you know, this is gonna drastically change the character of Trinidad. If a rancheria would redesign the the hotel to three stories and fifty rooms, it's likely that Trinidad could has enough water to supply a project of that scale. Especially if we follow through and are able to to store significant amounts outside of the Luffenholz Ranch. And the smaller, a smaller sized hotel would also make it much easier for the rancheria to satisfy the firefighting capacity restrictions that the coastal commission has now placed on the project. So in summary, next, next slide. Luffenholz Creek is good now, but it can be made better. We follow through on the PWA plan. Bringing up the water from Mad River will have a negative effect on the area. Why don't we want to implement a a policy like that that's not in line with our our general plan? Any of the other documents that describe Trinidad area? I don't think the city should spend any money to explore a direction that's not desirable policy. We should get working on developing the ponds to store water outside the watershed, just like the state of California is doing. It's a hypothetical for you. Suppose, if somebody noticed that, well, we're way behind on our low income housing obligations. Uh, and we can always use more money. Here's an idea, let's eliminate uh the thirty five foot building height restrictions in Trinidad and raise it up to, say, five stories. We could put uh portable units on the first couple of stories. We could put vacation rentals on the top higher stories. Think of all the income that that would bring into the city. If I tried to bring that to the city council, everybody would share, you're crazy. We're not gonna have that kind of tall development in the city. That's not a policy that we want to spend any money studying. I could say, well, let's study it at least. Let's find out how much money could we get off it? How many low income units could we, could we place in there? And you guys would run me out the door on a rail. So I'm saying, yeah, that's analogous to, you know, why don't we study bringing water from the Mad River? Well, it's not a policy that you should be supporting, so. And some of the people that criticize Luffenholz our existing system say, well, yeah, okay, there's a lot of water, you know, that we could take. We have to flow a certain amount past the intake in order to satisfy fishing game. Truth, but if we got to a serious enough drought that we couldn't even flow that much water past the system, we could petition and work with the agencies for a temporary exemption from those kind of regulations to allow because it's a matter of health and safety. They wouldn't say you can't take any more water out of, out of the creek. You know, we'd be able to work through that if it came along. I don't think it would if we play our cards right, so. I don't think we should be spending money on a study, a couple of hundred thousand dollars, I hear. We'd have to get grant funding, and that would take a long time and Humboldt needs something to happen fast on this. I don't wanna be stampeded into a direction, a policy direction that is not the way we should be going. We wouldn't go if we thought it out carefully and slowly. And so what we could do for ourselves as a, as a community without centralizing our water system. So those are my thoughts on this question.
Um, any statements that the rest of you would like to make some commentary or questions?
Yeah, um, I think, you know, uh, we're all Team Trinidad here. Uh, we all, um, want the very best for our families. We all want the uh future of this um community to thrive. We don't really want change at all in this community. I, um, you know, in this American ecosystem that we're living in, we're very dependent on other people's, other people's hands, decisions. Um, you know, all of our food comes from thousands of miles away, our electricity comes from hundreds of miles away, and our water comes from up the street. That's a huge, kind of a cool thing, that the lifeblood of what we do every day comes from up the street. And we're thinking about maybe giving that ability to another organization in uh hundreds of months away. Right now, we have hundred, hundred percent control of what we're doing, and now we're thinking about giving that control away. So that's, that's kind of scary to me, you know, um. Someday down the line, we're gonna be seeing cyber attacks on different things in this community, and maybe that water line is gonna be attacked. Who knows? But we are control, a hundred percent control of our water right now. And that's an important thing, you know, um, we gotta remember that. Um, definitely, I don't wanna have shortages for our family and communities. And I don't wanna have crazy growth in this community either, so. A lot of, but there's a lot of good points on both sides, so I'm really, yeah, really torn.
Yeah, I'm also really torn. Um, I, you know, wanna come to all these conversations with Open Mind. And I really appreciate all of you, you know, researching and sharing your thoughts and opinions. And I think we all have, um, put together some really important pieces of the puzzle. And I see this all as an interconnected issue. It's, it's not just the water, it's uh the annexation issue, it's uh the sewage. And, uh, you know, I'm concerned that, you know, the seats might need to address anyways. Um, whether or not we add more water to our system or not. So, you know, I, um, and I, I've heard nobody say that they're willing to pay the rates that we need to pay to make our system sustainable. Um, so, I mean, I'm assuming that you all who are, you know, against this feasibility study are willing to pay those rates. I think I'm leaning in the direction of doing a feasibility study that, um, addresses a larger, you know, view on our water system and giving us different options, um, not just this pipeline. That, that's what I would, I would like to see, um, if we're really wanting to get data and facts.
Now, I'm in favor of a feasibility study because I know what happened when we did the water rates study. It suddenly was there in black and white, uh, well, actually, it was in many colors. But, uh, we could see clearly, uh, what we had to do and gave us a pathway and and it's sustaining the water production at this point. But it won't change definitely. So I want, I wanna know comparative figures. Uh, what, what is actually viable? Um, in terms of the variability of water and in terms, in terms of climate change, in terms of costs, um, going forward. Um, I can't make a decision just wi- without knowing those things. So I'm very much in favor of proceeding. And it apparently, uh, Joe says that we can get grants to cover the cost, so it is money that we can't afford just then.
Yeah, we don't know how much either, so.
Well, we better get the grants before we commission the study, or we'll end up paying for it out of our pocket.
Yeah, I think, I think. We're in court, or whatever you say. I think I've really taken heart a lot that I've heard tonight about concerns about growth. Concerns about, you know, thinking more broadly than the city of Trinidad, which I like to think I do. I mean, we set up the community emergency response team. We did a whole, we do a whole bunch of stuff that is, is about the community as a whole. Um, but I'm also mindful, as Dick pointed out, that we're not the county board of supervisors, we're not the county planning commission. Uh, we're not the rancheria, yeah, either. We are, we're just, you know, the city of Trinidad trying to figure out how to source and deliver clean water to our constituents in the most effective, efficient, environmentally sensitive way. And I mean, we all have opinions here at this table and in this room. I feel like we all have a lot of opinions, and I have my own opinions about how things should work. I'd really like to get a third party study done and put this to rest once and for all that says, gee, Trinidad, you know, it could come back and say, gee, Trinidad, you're much better off running your own water plant. Or I could say, gee, Trinidad, you really should look at this option. But you know what? We're not voting on, if option B was to hook up to Humboldt Bay, we're not voting on that tonight. What we would be voting on tonight is that we wanna compare and contrast, that we wanna do the comparative analysis. So that's gonna be my motion. So I'm gonna move, um, that the council would direct staff to proceed, um, to, uh, to proceed with a comparative study that would outline things I mentioned earlier, right? Environmental impact, the financial impact, the, um, growth impact, et cetera, of these two comparative systems. So, or comparing the two systems. So my motion is a comparative analysis between two, those two options. And I think that's it, full stop. That's, I think that's my motion. Sorry, did I forget to add something?
Well, I just, I'm wondering because I'm hearing that we were expecting that to be paid for with grants.
So, so I think we got to go.
I'm also hearing that we have to move immediately if we want to participate in. So what, I mean, you gonna go ahead if we don't have a grant or?
Okay, so good point, how are we gonna pay for it? So I think I would draft staff, the motion would be direct staff to proceed with outlining what the comparative analysis would include and how much it would cost. And that comparative analysis would be between the two systems. And if it comes back to the council and it's too much money or we can't get a grant fund, then I assume we wouldn't do it.
Yeah, I mean, city engineers doing so either.
I mean, I'm just struggling with getting the motion right, but I think you understand the spirit, but helping with.
I, I think you say, you don't, and we can come back with some kind of RFP proposal. Then we would get some votes.
And so I guess to make it clear, if we can afford it, then I think with the council, what my motion would be is we go ahead and do this comparative analysis. We call it a feasibility study, but we compare and contrast the two models. And, and the two models in this case are hooking up to Humboldt Bay municipal water district, it could be down the road twenty years, I don't know. Or as an emergency backstop, but still compare and contrast those two systems. Does that make sense?
Well, to some extent, but to me, the piece that's missing is if we can't do all this quick enough to get in with the rancheria on this, we lose, you know, the synergy.
You're right.
We better, we better find out how much time we have to say yes or no.
I asked Jackie, was she talking about two years? She said two.
Yeah, and so I guess what I, Bryce, and that may be orthogonal in a way, but, but if we miss that one, though, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm kind of more, I've been more in the camp of like, I just get, I just wanna get, put this to rest and have the comparative analysis done. If we miss the window of working with the rancheria, that would be unfortunate. But I think we should, we should march toward our own time. That's what I'm thinking, but. But I would go up to here from the other council.
Even though, even though we're not in a drought year.
Even though what?
We're not in a drought time right now.
No, no, honestly, kind of, I know, the water scarcity, you know, we went through this ad nauseam back in twenty twenty one. I'm not as, nor was I then, uh, super, super concerned about that. What, what's really bothering me the last four years, um, is, is, is the aging plant infrastructure, the staffing, the cost. I mean, we're gonna go bankrupt at this rate. And, you know, you know, you know the issues, right? And the emergency situation.
We have to raise our wits.
Right now, we're just having council discussion. I'm sorry, but we really, we wanna kind of get to the bottom of this. It's, it's getting late.
And, you know, we need to find out from Humboldt Bay. She, she, the representative tonight said, this needs to happen fast. We need to find out how fast is fast. Because if we can't, we can't catch that wave, I, I, I just question, you know, we've got a better option to just work with what we have and live within the natural limitations on.
Well, I guess I'll include that in my comparative analysis. So the comparative analysis would have to take into consideration that the cost of being much higher if we didn't catch that wave, so to speak. So, so I think you're right, there's a timeline there in this. Now, unfortunately, we're in a bigger crunch than we would have been four years ago, right? We could have just done this and made a decision and moved on.
They're, they're creating urgency.
Again, you guys, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna ask for no comments, please, from the, from the, I I know this is a hot topic, but I really wanna get the council one way or the other here. And if I make a motion, they can say no.
Don't be playing.
Oh, no, no. I didn't mean it like that. All right, so that's my motion, you guys. As best I can do it is to direct staff to proceed with the comparative analysis to evaluate the relative pros and cons of the two systems. And to, as Bryce said, do it in a timely fashion. And so we can, you know, really evaluate. That's my motion. I mean, you can, and so if there's no second, it dies on the floor. And we'll go on.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, Katie second, so I'm gonna ask for a show of hands. All those in favor? All right, so three, and all those opposed? Okay, and two opposed. So the motion passes three to two. And I will work with, we'll work with staff to get that in the minutes exactly how that comparative analysis was. Bryce, maybe, even though you may, maybe you can. Okay, Paul, thank you for your comments. We really.
She already mentioned that we're going to use a new.
No, they are.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your participation and.
It's hard to hear that.
Yeah, off fries.
Well, fries is to talk about this. Can you put it without.
Actually, I have a. So now you know why I suffer. Well, so you know what? We could, we could approve their consent. By forum.
I started writing this morning, all these thoughts and I was.
But it's a really low chance tomorrow, but it will be humid and it will. There is a weather concern that is not with disturbance along about Friday night or Saturday, of course. That's when it's kind of getting slightly angrous on the index values they are for on. The humidity levels. So when we look at the heat index, that.
Alright, maybe um. Maybe we should go ahead and get started. Um we, as you may recall, moved number four from the consent agenda to discussion items. So. Uh I'll turn it over to our uh city manager to give us just a brief introduction to the. MOU between the city of Trinidad and H cog.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and those of you who are still hanging out. I would appreciate it. This is an MOU between the city of Trinidad and H cog for the partnering assets and authorities for comprehensive transit for PACT Act. Uh this agreement was signed back in twenty twenty four with a previous city manager. Uh it includes the study of Humboldt Transit and Humboldt Transit Authority. Uh mobility services, Caltrans, local tribal cities, county agency to plan transportation in the landies together. Uh considering socioeconomic equity factors and funding mechanisms. Uh this came in a bit, thi- thi- this uh grant is. For eight thousand dollars for uh to fund Trinidad's portion of the grant. There was initially a two thousand dollar match, was he asked? And uh I initially thought. We don't get a lot of transportation uh service, services from uh. The transportation authority and my initial response was two thousand. Uh to leverage eight thousand is a, is a great deal for us. So I uh. Had a conversation with the uh program manager Una. And she agreed that she would reduce it to a nine hundred and eighteen dollar match. It can be used with staff time, uh travel. Um and there's some other mechanisms to help provide that match. Uh. Nine hundred dollars just to put in perspective, it's somewhere in the twenty dollar. Range for staff member total for the year. So it's not a huge ask. Um I. My initial thought to not participate was overridden by the fact that we want to be good friends and neighbors of other cities in. Uh the county and um we do, we see some benefit from the services that the transportation authority provides. And so I. By my doubts, I agree to participate in this and bring you to the council for your discussion and uh motion.
Thank you, Bryce. I think you had.
Well, I didn't, I didn't catch anywhere in the packet that was knocked down to nine, nine hundred and eighteen.
That that was, that was a later.
That's, that's great. My, maybe I'm being overly cautious here, but. My concern is after I read the four pages of the partnering assets. You know, which lays out what the city's expected to do.
Yeah, with actions.
It's part of it. I'm thinking, is this really the right time when, you know, our city manager is leaving? We have an interim city manager who is somewhat concerned about. Having more tasks than he could handle at this point. Is this the time to? Pull back and focus on the core functions of the city as far as the manager's time? Or, you know, this, this is why I pulled it for discussion. What do you guys think? You know, you gotta twenty hours, I don't know. Looks like to really meaning, you know, they want people, they want uh. Us to help develop expert policy. You know, bring expertise to the table. That means you got to do background.
What's the benefit to us? I think that's the question, right? Like, do we get anything back from?
I think we're just helping the county to fund this transportation study.
Yeah.
And as far as becoming expert policymakers, if we participate, we participate. And if we don't, then. We don't.
They're going to do it without us.
Yeah.
In a way, I kind of hate to, to say, no, we're not interested because, you know, I go to H cog. I'm I'm.
I know, I know. That's why I was wondering.
For a nine hundred dollar asset, since this is all request and.
Yeah, the money's, the money's small.
It's, 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 it's. The time would be manageable. I promise you that I haven't probably spent that much time on this at all. We're benefiting from it, yeah, so.
Well, okay, but I'd ask you too, I guess as a, do you think it's something that you can take on given? Now, or do you want us to kind of?
Maybe we could.
I mean.
Maybe we can join later.
Yeah.
After we get our feet underneath us to see if we're gonna. Who's going to be the long-term city head? That's what, you know, we don't know that at this.
We don't, and that's a good point too. I mean, I'm all for, you know, reducing workload in these kinds of situations, so. But I, I don't know, honestly, I don't know enough about the relative value to us here.
It's not. The value is partnering with other members of the city and county. And having that network of peers. There is some value in that, but it's just kind of showing some solidarity. With the rest of the county. That's, that's it in a nutshell. That's why I made the decision to bring it to council.
Okay.
Well, it's a good thing too. To private city council, I'm looking at the packet online and we did include this in a prior city council meeting packet. From, I believe it was a year ago, it was January twenty twenty four. Looking at the letter right now, I found this letter. I included it in the packet because I was doing research when I got the request. I'm like, where did this come from? But if you look at this letter, the seconds, the last sentence of the second last paragraph says, the city.
Of Trinidad makes a commitment to be an active partner in this project and pledges to contribute two thousand for the funny matching night contribution.
So I feel like. City made a commitment a year and a half ago.
We also said that we don't have staff on, we don't have.
Yeah.
Exactly. There's a lot of that in that letter as well.
Oh, okay. So you can, you can opt out if you're, if you don't have time.
That would most mean to participate in.
Alright, well then we.
But how much we pledge to contribute from a time perspective, I think is negotiable enough.
Yeah, then I'm comfortable with your advice. You're at the H cog.
Well, I can see where it. Maybe things you can handle it, I, you know.
Yeah.
Willing to, looks like we have.
Maybe we'll go to public comments.
Help us out here.
Okay, public comment on this topic.
Ready?
Yeah.
So I am your representative in the social services technical advisory committee for H cog.
Ah.
So um I have a little bit of peripheral experience with this. My suggestion is that you definitely participate.
Hmm.
The reason is that we're granted, I I completely understand the. Issues related to resources, completely understand. But oftentimes, we get neglected. In making these decisions, particularly when it comes to uh how to allocate resources for transportation. And as you know, we go through that process every year where uh we ask for, you know, unmet transit needs. Um and I don't want to say I have to fight for Trinidad. But Trinidad often is kind of the on city out because again, you don't have a lot of influence. And um you know, it's not like we have a mass transit uh infrastructure. But I I think it's very important that we still remain very much involved in what the county is doing because as they. As they plan new uh transit projects, I want to make sure that we're a part of that. And um and so. Personally, I just think you, whatever you can do, um. Let's do it. I also would suggest if I can have another conversation with Una. Because I think she would, you will find that she might be able to help you with. What exactly would be the minimum amount of effort that you would have to put into this to still contribute and make it worth the effort, so.
Yeah, yes.
I uh just a bus alone, time to go to CR, Humboldt State. It's a luxury. It's also a emergency public assistance, like a water issue. That we have to have a bus, we have to have a boost in transportation. Uh every day, I don't know why we don't have it on Sunday, but um as a loophole, we have a clamor. As a city bus too, and please don't look like now, you know, it's like, or I mean, not collecting the tickets, granted. These are great things. I would say um students, uh possible employees. And then um uh like hospital appointments, things like that, you know, you don't see many people on the bus. Six at the most to wear each, each green, but um. Just to think of that and then also to build with that, then maybe, you know, throw in some, there's no signage on the bus on the inside saying, you know. Uh Lighthouse Square or Seascape or something, but you know, they have good milkshakes, you know, something that will enhance Trinidad as well or. Uh uh a walk on the beach, you know, put some signage on the bus.
Thank you.
I know it's probably, you know, one of those riffraff issues, but um it's also a great asset and also people are going. Carbon free. And then sometimes the bus just comes up empty. And so there's some things that that could be addressed.
Alright, thank you. So that, that speaks to our staying involved with uh H cog, which is great. Good suggestion. And uh bringing it back to.
I'm moved that we uh agree to participate.
Okay, I'll second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright, okay, so we will definitely continue to participate in this. And then we're. Uh and now we're at the staff activity report. Staff activity report.
Uh there is a door, here we go. Final one of the night. And thank you for all you who hung out and those of you who are still here. Uh Waterland Water Public Works, Eric Sanders invoice for June was four thousand dollars for our agreement with Eric. Carl Anderson did pass his T three exam on June sixth. Water treatment pen will have the annual state permit inspection, which is currently scheduled for the twenty first. Uh staff has been working to repair and rig work items from last year's inspection and what the. Permit uh inspector has given us to look forward for this year. And we are confident that the patent, the plant will pass. Look on the old creek flow data as of July twenty seven, twenty twenty five is three point one two five cubic feet a second. Uh there was a small log blocking some of that flow and staff renewed that this past week. Uh what statement in a time project that did, uh that project is going to get a notice to proceed. And we would hope that it would go into construction uh sometime in mid-August. But the consumer confidence report is now available online as required by our permit. Uh we will be getting started on the capital uh works projects of the windows, rock and porch repairs now that we have the funds available to do that. Uh ALMT staff is still talking with postal commission on our permit and the appeal. Uh we will plan on having him talk with them again tomorrow at ten or eleven o'clock. Uh we're trying to figure out exactly what time tomorrow that's going to be. Uh Angela has.
Say an appeal with the coast with mission tomorrow?
No, we're going to discuss the appeal.
Oh, discuss it.
You mean the non-appeal?
The non-appeal. Angela has been working tirelessly to complete all the documents and history for the water tanks. She turned those in uh last week and I was amazed was probably a hundred and fifty pages worth of. Facts, it was a thesis. And I think they had three comments on edits on one, three sentences.
Wow.
It was amazing, honestly. Uh and that wraps up this uh staff activity report for tonight. And happy to answer questions or comments if you have.
No questions or comments except that I'm sad that this is our last meeting. Um uh let me go to public comments.
Nia Thompson.
Where do we look? A little shell shock for somebody.
Yeah, anyway, um, what was the reason that uh that we had above average water loss?
Sorry, what?
What was the reason that we had the above average water loss, water loss, water loss?
Easy points.
She's looking at that.
Water loss, I'll have to, I'll have to get that.
Twenty-three point.
I don't, it's, that's a little higher than average, I'm, I'm, I'll have to ask, um, why don't we go to some flushing or something?
Oh.
For the new water line, we just put it, guessing that's it, but I I will get back to that next, but that's okay.
Yeah, of course, and then uh, that's very good, Carl passed the T three, and then, so how, so what are the next step? And how long will it take him to uh become our chief plant operator, and then what is that?
He needs a D one. Yeah, it'd be a distribution, yeah, they have distribution one and a T three.
So that means.
So he's scheduled to take his D one, I think, so in this month, maybe or next month. And it'll take a few months for the state to work through that permit, but he's still learning, so we'll have the interim CPO on board for foreseeable future, probably through the end of this year, I would guess. I would say optimistically, hoping that by January, staff is able to do it, and maybe Mr. Sanders will be consultant who will work on.
That would be great.
As a new basis, not on the contract.
We just passed a test.
There, there are not a whole lot of time, so people.
We have no meeting in August, um, we have already teed up some future agenda items for September. Is there anything anything wants to add? Um, or you can send my email. To. A long night, okay, with that, I would like to go ahead and adjourn the meeting, thank you.
Have a good one, thank you. Thank you, Bryce.